So councillors, I open the meeting at 6:04pm on July 27th, 2021. So before I go on, I'd like to go through some housekeeping virtual meeting. I will endeavour to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the debate. Be mindful that due to the virtual platform, the debate and questions will be different to face-to-face meeting. So when speaking, it is probably, and most importantly, when you're speaking, please clarify your name prior to addressing the meeting. And I'll probably call a break around the 8.30 mark. And also, if you need to ask a question or we'd like to have a debate, please raise your hand. So now to say the prayer and the acknowledgement. Councillor tonight, I'll be praying for first prayer and acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon the council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and true will for the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. In the acknowledgement of country, I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bichigal and the Gadigal people who occupied the Sydney coast. Being the traditional owners, on behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to their elders, both past and present, and to the Aboriginal people in attendance today. So I'll do the apologies again. So I've got councillor Beech, councillor Rovinos and councillor Thang. And I think that's all. And I think councillor Bowen, you're here. So there's no...
I'll move it. The apologies be accepted, Mr Mayor, councillor Andrew.
Do I have a second there?
I'll second that.
Seconded by councillor Hamilton. So I declare that carried. The confirmation of the minutes of the order remaining of 29th of June, 2021?
Yep.
Councillor Hamilton's moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Luxford is seconded. For those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against, declare that carried. Declarations of peculiary and non-pecuniary interests. Councillor Mattson?
Yes, I declare a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest as the speaker to my motion on NM51, building on March council resolution to encourage female sporting participation is known to me from my involvement on Randwick City Council.
Thank you councillor. Any further declarations? No?
I have a declaration, Mr Mayor.
Yep.
Councillor D'Souza?
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So I have a non-significant and non-pecuniary interest in CO3021. I will be voting on the matter. I know people involved with Souths and the Bunroong Gymnastics Centre. I also have a non-significant and a non-pecuniary interest in MM, your mayor will admit it, Mr Mayor, 22/21, as I was on the board of Meals on Wheels. But I will still be voting on the matter. And they're the two interests I wish to declare. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further declarations?
Councillor Nielsen, I have the same declaration as councillor Mattson.
Mr Mayor, I've got a declaration.
Yep, councillor Bowen?
Yeah, just in relation to CP47/21. I'm just aware, it's a non-significant, non-pecuniary declaration, but I understand at least one of the council's law firms on their panel is a law firm that also occasionally retains my services, but not in that particular court. Look, I think as a precaution, I'll just abstain from voting on that matter. I mean, I know there's no commercial or any financial aspect to it. It's just a report, but just for the sake of, you know, keeping everything in the one place.
Mr Mayor, councillor, councillor Andrews, a non-pecuniary, non-significant interest in regards to the plan of management, Heffron Park Plan of Management. Which number does that one just mean?
No, that's within the the outdoor spaces policy.
Is that the one? Sorry, I'm just a bit confused. Okay, because councillor D'Souza said C030 of 21. So it's CS35/21, is it?
We'll have to clarify with it. Councillor D'Souza?
Yeah.
Is that the open spaces? Are you talking about the open spaces?
I was more concerned, Mr Mayor, with the extraordinary meeting with regards to Heffron Plan of Management. I think that's what CO30
Yeah, it is.
With regards to that, CO3021. But if the general manager can guide me, I'd be appreciative. I just want to, I have a non-pecuniary interest with regards to the gymnasium and of course, the gymnastics and I should say, and Souths. So I just want to clear the deck. So maybe the general manager can tell me which one I should be declaring a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in. Now she knows my position. Or have I done it already?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I would suggest councillor D'Souza and all councillors that this report is simply recommending an extraordinary meeting. You're not making a decision in relation to a plan of management or any of the contents of what will be the extraordinary meeting. So it's unnecessary to declare a conflict of interest for the purposes of an extraordinary meeting.
Yep. No, I'm quite happy with that. Yep. So I could withdraw that if needed.
Okay. Councillor Andrews, do you still have one? Or does that dismay that as well?
It's been explained. Thank you.
And Mayor, sorry, councillor Nielsen, I have another declaration and that's in relation to CP50/21, the Informing Strategy Arts and Culture Strategy, a non-significant, non-pecuniary. I'm president of the Friendsburnham House.
Thank you. Any more? So now we'll just move into addresses by the public. And councillors, can I just ask, and people watching, just to keep your mics off while the public speak? Please, because there is a bit of background noise at the moment. I wish to advise that this meeting is being livestreamed using an audiovisual link in accordance with section 747A of the Local Government Act. I would like to remind all councillors that we continue to be obliged to disclose and appropriately manage conflicts of interest that may, they may have in matters being considered in this meeting. Councillors continue to be obliged to remove themselves from any consideration of matters in which a pecuniary or significant non-pecuniary conflict of interest. Councillors continue to be obliged to protect any confidential information considered at this meeting. During the closed session part of the meeting, councillors should ensure that they participate in the meeting in a location where they cannot be seen or heard by anyone else. And this is for the speakers tonight, that the public forum section of the meeting is also being livestreamed using an audiovisual link to allow submissions to be made to councillors. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes and I may grant you an extra minute. Presenters will be stopped at that three-minute mark and granted an extra minute. Councillors may ask you questions of the presenters at the end of your submission. So our first speaker, which is NM51/21 and also CS35/21, notice of motion from councillor Mattson, building on March council resolution to encourage female sporting participation. And speaking for is Ms Kim Rosen. So your mics off, Kim?
Yes, right now. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you all councillors for giving me the opportunity to speak. Look, I applaud this motion. You know, I'm very involved, have been involved with women's sport. I think it's really important to do everything possible to promote women's sport, especially in Randwick City. So you'll see there, I've just done some dot points, they're excerpts from council's open space strategy, which you're all probably very familiar with. There's no doubt that there's a lot of pressure on the open space and facilities in Randwick. And it does note that a lot of it's driven by female participation. So when you look at, when you drill down at the popularity of the sports, you can see there that gymnastics is the fourth most popular in New South Wales. And if you look at the percentage of 16.9% are girls, and that's certainly my experience from the gymnastics club that I used to run. One of the reasons why the study says that indoor venues are important is because of climate change. Another reason is that indoor facilities can cater for participation all year round, whereas outdoor facilities are obviously affected by the weather and they're very seasonal. So you'll find that the indoor facilities get much better use if you consider the time of the year. Okay, so when the study looks at the provision of indoor sports venues, there's actually only one council-owned indoor recreation centre in Randwick City and one gymnastics facility. Yep. So they did some benchmarking and they found that actually in 2016, they needed to have another two extra. And that by 2031, they're going to need to have 2.4. So I think then council, it's incumbent on council to try and work out how they're going to achieve that. I know when I read the, when I read the Plan of Management, it mentions in there, well, there are quite a few examples of how the Plan of Management is picking up things in the, in the open space study. But it doesn't, it doesn't pick up the urgent need for indoor sporting facilities, which I think is, is a big shame and a lost opportunity. But it's not too late because the Plan of Management hasn't been signed off. There's always an opportunity for that to be considered by councillors and I really hope that you do. Obviously, they say, you know, sporting facilities should be close to a public transport. That makes sense, especially if you've got children coming from school to participate in their sports. Strategic Direction Three actually gives some guidance for council that recreation facilities should be, the capacity should be increased. So obviously, more facilities are going to be needed. Councillor Mattson will probably speak to that a bit more. And one of the actions is to have an internal open space and recreation working group. So I think that's actually a very good start and I would encourage councillors to actually get that happening as soon as possible in line with the review that's coming up. I did just want to touch on, I wonder how many of you have actually been watching the Olympics?
Sorry, Miss Rosen, you've got one extra minute.
I said all. I run out of time so quickly. But anyway, you will have had a wonderful time watching the Olympics. So you'll see it's not all that, you know, competition at any cost. You'll see the characters of the gymnasts there and how they handle themselves and their disappointments and so on. I did want to mention, and this is not, I'm not going out of bounds, you will all know that Bunroong has been given, have been told they need to vacate. So here we've got some maps because there's no point in suggesting that you consider putting extra, extra buildings, extra facilities if there's nowhere to put them. So if you scroll down, you'll see the proposed huge car park in pink. So there is a site and if you scroll down further, sorry, if you go to the next slide I'm supposed to see, you'll see this very large car park, which is about 7,000 square metres, is an absolutely ideal position to put an indoor centre, whether it's gymnastics, it's indoor, whatever, it can fit. And then if you scroll down a bit further, you'll see that on the master plan, it's going to be a very, very easy exercise to add a building either. There's two positions there. I had a meeting with Todd Clark. There's one position there you see directly underneath the Heffron Centre. And if you go to the next slide, it can also fit slightly to the right. So I urge you all to seriously consider paving the way for having more facilities for female sports, indoor sports, particularly gymnastics. You know that that is my passion. Just one little thing I just would ask you, it probably isn't thought of, but you need to get the toilets right in the, in the proposed
Sorry, Miss Rosen, we can get to that.
For 70 children, 70 females.
Is there any, is there any questions for Ms Rosen? Councillor Mattson?
Yes, just following up on the reference you made to a need for more female toilets. Could you elaborate on that a bit, please?
Yes, I think, look, I can't say whether, whether the decision on how many toilets were put in the, in the new indoor gym was made by a group of men or not. That's probably sexist to say that, but I don't think a lot of people understand that young girls, especially prepubescent adolescents don't use the toilets just to go to the bathroom. They like privacy, so they line up at the toilets to get changed. So only two toilets have been provided for about 60 to 70 gymnasts. It's way, way under what is required. The BCA even says so. And I don't understand why there are extra toilets for the indoor sports, extra toilets for the ground staff and way extra toilets for Souths. So I think there's an opportunity to do a bit of shifting around and moving the toilets because you just can't have that many girls lining up for two toilets.
Any other questions? Councillor Mattson?
Yes, Miss Rosen, do you think the council has received a mandate from the community to achieve better participation in female sports by, from the gymnastics community?
Well, most definitely from the gymnastics community. I would have thought that that would be a given. You know, there's been so much talk of increasing participation for females and giving females opportunities. Yes, I think that council's received enough submissions to know that more facilities, more space is needed. So this is why I'm suggesting that council seriously consider popping in another building into the Plan of Management. Because not only will that make it good for gymnastics, but it could make it good for other indoor sports as well. And so it's really killing two birds with one stone.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Rosen.
Thank you.
So now we have NM52/21. Notice of motion for councillor Mattson, need for legislative or regulatory change in response to the July sewage overflows in Carrington Road. And speaking for is Ms Louise Clinton.
Aye.
Go ahead, you've got.
Good evening and thank you everyone for your time. A sewage leak was first reported to Sydney Water on the 21st of June. The next day, an environmental health officer attended and agreed we had a problem. The first slide here is, sort of demonstrates what the leak looked like initially. For the next 11 days, my neighbours and I were in daily contact with Sydney Water and the council to try and identify the source of the problem while pleading for help to deal with the raw sewage. As you see on the next slide, it was, it became free-flowing down the street. The smell was putrid and we were becoming increasingly concerned for the health of the public walking by. We were aggrieved having to spend hours holding the excrement from our pathways. As we all know, harmful bacteria and viruses are present in raw sewage. On the 1st of July, a visit by Sydney Water coincided with a visit from a private plumber. Together, they were able to work out the leakage was coming from houses some 200 metres up the road. On the weekend of the 3rd of July, the sewage worsened and my patience was frayed. Next slide, please. On the 4th of July, we reached out for additional support. Philip Ovech, the deputy mayor, was horrified by the situation and responded, as did Murray Mattson, both committing to assist residents. People with dogs, families, children playing on the street had to be redirected by residents out of the excrement. Eventually, the council put warning signs on the street and sandbags to redirect the waste. This meant that the raw sewage was now travelling all the way down Carrington Road to the intersection of Brim Street, where it flowed into a stormwater drain, which in turn flows into the ocean. Coogee locals would be horrified, I am sure, to learn that they were swimming and surfing in raw sewage. The pipework where the issue originates from, serving up to 28 properties, is located under council land. Sydney Water maintain the responsibility lies with the residents of these houses. How can they be held responsible for common sewer line that has existed since the subject land was subdivided around 100 years ago? Sydney Water cleared the blockage, but this is only a temporary fix until the pipes are properly fixed. It is just a matter of time before that sewage builds back up again and once again floods the street. Can you imagine the smell in the summer months if sewage escapes again? I urge all the authorities to stop, to stop shifting the blame. Please pull together and get the problem fixed. It appears to me that Sydney Water are the only organisation who have the technology, manpower and knowledge to fix this issue. Make no mistake, free-flowing raw sewage in a built-up area is a serious environmental health problem. It barely, it's barely acceptable in a third world community, let alone a developed one. As the last slide shows, it just got worse and worse.
Excuse me, sorry, Ms Clinton, you've got an extra minute. Go ahead.
The government has us all in lockdown to prevent the spread of a virus. Yet raw sewage running down our streets cannot be addressed in a swift and reasonable manner. I find that unacceptable. Legislative or regulatory changes is an appropriate long-term solution. But when the sewage leaks happen again, why should the residents of Carrington Road be forced to live in such putrid squalor? Thank you.
Any questions? Councillor Mattson?
Would you be supportive of the council seeking reform from the government to allow council or Sydney Water to directly intervene regardless of whether or not they've received permission from private residences to fix situations like this?
I absolutely would because I have sympathy with the people who live up the road in the 28 houses. For some of those people are probably completely unaware of the fact that under their ground, there is an issue. And I think that it would be a hard call to get all those people to pay money. And, you know, just speaking to all the various people throughout the process, I believe that the money that it would cost to fix the problem is immense. And at the moment, a lot of people don't have a lot of spare money hanging around to fix problems like that. And I just think that from a purely environmental perspective and for the health and wellbeing of people, somebody has to take responsibility. And if Sydney Water are the only people that have the manpower and the facilities to actually fix the problem, surely they have to be asked to do it on behalf of all the people that pay the rates.
Thank you.
Personal opinion.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Ms Clinton. Thank you. So now we have NM56/21. Notice of motion for councillor Roberts, Coogee Shared Village Community Consultation. And speaking against is Richard Woodburn. Mr Woodburn, go ahead. Oh, you, mic, Mr Wood. Just going to turn your mic off.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor and councillors. I was speaking tonight about the motion submitted by councillor Roberts relating to Coogee Bay Road. And in particularly the fact that 75% of the community as per that motion are supposedly supporting that extension. However, none of the locals I speak with share that view. And at a well-attended precinct committee meeting earlier this year, only one person spoke in favour of that motion. And even she admitted she lives far enough away not to be impacted by the increased congestion and loss of bus services that affected other local residents. I'd like to look at the reasons why there's such a disparity between the views of local residents and the outcome of that survey. And firstly, a number of businesses distorted the outcome by placing survey QR codes on their tables and they encouraged their patrons to do a quick survey. For example, my daughter and her husband, they come from Newcastle. They met with friends at Manly, the newly opened Temple Bay. They were all asked to do the survey as soon as they sat down and also to say they came from Coogee. All they had to do was tick the boxes saying they support the project's extension. It'll only take a couple of seconds, they were told. The survey was also very biased towards a supportive outcome, with plenty of boxes to tick what was good, but no similar options to say what you didn't like. In fact, to say anything negative took a concerted effort. The many detailed comments by those opposed to the trial were drowned out by the superficial tick-the-box responses. There also appear to be no control over multiple responses to the respondents, again distorting the survey results. I'd like to look specifically at some of the impacts of that project on the local residents. Council's original report said that 41 businesses would benefit. However, only nine had dedicated tables and seats. A further 12 could take advantage of the picnic areas. That's only 21 out of 41. Similar businesses in Arden, Dolphin, Carr and other Coogee streets gained no benefit. A number of businesses reported adverse outcomes. Council's initial predictions also were that 750 additional customers would be drawn to Coogee each day. Even at peak times, however, less than 10% of the seats were generally occupied. Very occasionally, it got to 25%. Even then, for every seat that was occupied, there were vacant seats at either existing footpath tables or just inside. Council did know before and after patronage study to back this up. Council's initial report also said there'd be no loss of parking. However, six spaces were lost. There was a massive increase in traffic congestion on adjacent streets, particularly Alfreda, Brook and Carr Streets. Traffic including buses backing up in Carr Street from the Crown Plaza up to Brook Street roundabout on regular occasions. Again, there was no traffic impact study. Bus routes were affected. The 370 diversion added considerable to route travel times and impacted timetabling whilst adding to the congestion in Carr Street.
And, excuse me, Woodburn, you've got an extra minute.
Thank you. The 374 rerouting resulted in the closure of the popular Brook Street stop. Its many patrons either had to walk to the beach stops, adding 10 minutes to their commute, or walk up a steep hill to Brim Street, a challenge that the less able. The cost far exceeded the $100,000 government grant and by mid-December, at least another 160, at least another $68,000 had been spent of council funds and even more after that. To extend the project is going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Implementation of this trial came at considerable cost to ratepayers, local residents and other businesses with loss of parking spaces, increased traffic congestion and loss of bus services. The forecast patronage was not achieved and little benefit to businesses. The motion and the associated council report are based on a flawed survey and ignores many of the adverse impacts on the community. Let's not perpetuate that situation by considering its reinstatement. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr Woodburn? No? Thank you, Mr Woodburn. So councillors, we'll go straight into debating the items we had speakers on, so...
Mr Mayor, could I move a procedural motion that, in that, your suggestion that my motion relating to the gymnastics issue be considered with the recommendation for CS3521 Informing Strategy Open Space and Recreation Strategy?
I'm just going to clarify, do we do one each or do we do them together? I'm just going to ask the GM how it works, that's...
Certainly, Mr Mattson.
Yeah? So just ask the GM, do we do the motion first and vote on that? And then we do the, straight into the open spaces plan?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I would do the notice of motion first, after which, in the Open Space and Recreation Strategy item, you would then acknowledge the amendment based on the notice of motion if that's passed.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. So councillors, so councillor Max, now I'm sure you're moving it. Do I have a second?
I would presume councillor Shuri would be seconding it, I should imagine.
I don't think so.
Well, Mr...
I know, I'm sure there's a second.
Yes, yes.
Yes, except, thank you, councillor Shuri. Go ahead.
Mr Mayor, I am moving it in an amended format. Mr Kelly will put it up. The amendment, as circulated late this afternoon, was as follows, that council include within its Open Space and Recreation Strategy, under Outcome Three, everyone has the opportunity to participate in sport and recreate, that is the heading of a strategy. But a new strategic approach as follows, collaborate with local sporting codes to identify opportunities and initiatives to increase female participation in sport by 2023. Mr Mayor, you recall that you very kindly sat down with me and the general manager and we worked out the few ways we could build on the earlier motion of this year, that I think was by councillor Luxford and councillor Parker, I think, seeking to further advance female participation in sport. My initial wording, I have dropped in favour of a suggestion from the general manager that I use the wording as displayed on the screen at the moment.
And so councillor Shuri, do you want to speak as, like a...
Yeah, I did want to just say that participation doesn't necessarily just mean gymnastics. I was really pleased when I was the mayor to note that the Randwick Football Club started up a girls', a women's team and that the Coogee, yeah, the Coogee Rugby Club have now have a girls' team. There are, you know, I think we should be trying to work with other sporting, with sporting organisations in general to try and get them to increase their women's participation.
So councillor Andrews, you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. In light of councillor Mattson's motion, I'd like to put a question to the relevant council officer. The question is, does council currently accommodate female participation in sport, noting recent recent developments in regards to Snake Park amenities block? Is that, I want to know that council is doing accommodating female participation in sport? And I note an example is the Snake Park amenities block. If the relevant director can just confirm that that is the case, that we are actually looking after female participation in sport?
And so before Mr. Clark speaks, Mr. Kelly, are you able to, I've had requests if we can make the screen bigger or the writing bigger? Thank you. So, Mr. Clark, you there? Yeah?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can confirm council works on an ongoing basis with the local sporting groups within the realms of the sports committee and the wider sporting associations to deliver many projects in the past. And ones coming in the current operational plan. So just to note, a really big success project or story we had this year was the redevelopment of the Coogee Oval Grandstand. That particular project saw the benefit to three different sporting codes for the maximisation of female sporting use. And also co-mixed use with male sporting at the same time, which is often a deterrent in female participation with change rooms become available and the like. So Coogee Oval just recently was a really good example. And then coming, in the coming year, we have Boroughs Park amenities, which is the principle, the philosophy of the design is pretty much solely around female participation. Snake Park amenities will take consideration to the growing participation in both sports. Cricket, especially in the fielding of senior teams in Randwick Pedestrian Cricket, who have done a fantastic job in the last few years of getting participation to increase. But they're just some projects to name a few. But pretty much the design principle for every sporting project or sporting amenity project is always to design a consideration of increased participation from females.
Councillor Mattson?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I haven't finished this.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That was just a question. I'm happy to, I'm happy to support this, this motion. But as we've just heard from the Director of City Services, council is already accommodating and accommodating female sport, accommodating female amenities. And I just think I'm happy to support this motion, but it should just be noted. It appears that councillor Mattson is just grandstanding on this particular motion. And I'm going to support it, but you know, we're just reiterating what council is actually doing. We are leading the way in female sport and female participation. And council should be congratulated in the work it does to recognise the participation of female sport in our city. Netball, one of the biggest sports of female participation. Council spends hundreds of thousands of dollars on that particular sport. We just heard that the Coogee Oval facility is going to accommodate female change rooms. We hear Boroughs Park and we also heard, as I mentioned earlier, the Snake Park amenities block for the first time will accommodate female amenities. And we should all be congratulated, but councillor Mattson, I'm happy to support, but you're just basically reassuring what council is already doing.
A question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, question first.
A question through to the general manager. Just in response to councillor Andrews's query as to why I'm doing this. The question I would put is, did council's 2020 recreational needs study identify that by 2031 there would be quotation, a need for female-friendly sporting amenities to support increased female participation in organised sport? Does this not indicate that if our own recreation needs study says that there's going to be an increased need, that the current rates become somewhat outdated or unuseful to the community as expressed by the council?
With you.
I'm happy to take the answer on notice, but I think it will be an ongoing debate. And I'd like to have that answer ready at some point this year.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the study in front of me, so I can't quote the actual study itself. Obviously, with a growing population, there will be increases in demand across the board for sporting facilities.
Question through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Andrews. I did include these very direct quotes in the background to my motion. It's actually on page 119. Do you actually read the background notes to other councillors' motions? That's my question to you.
I would not answer that question. It's a quite obvious question, councillor Mattson. I take that as great.
Okay.
Further question, further question.
Can I move on to councillor DeRosa then?
Direct your questions, direct your questions to the mayor, councillor.
Uh, to the mayor, to the mayor, to the mayor. Does councillor Andrews, and this is a question through you to the councillor, support the recommendations of council's 2020 recreational needs study that we would need?
Mister Mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to move straight on to councillor DeRosa. Councillor DeRosa, you had a question?
Yeah, I, look, I'm going to support councillor Murray's motion too. But like Anthony's just said, and it really does need to be highlighted because even with this motion, it's almost like that council, and I read the motion and I read its history, but it's almost like the, you know, that council's not doing enough with female sports. Well, listening to Todd and what he just said, I think we need to really promote that, that we are, you know, visionaries and we are like, you know, catering for women's sport. Lindsay touched it on before with the rugby union when she was mayor, I remember that. You know, and it was lovely to hear what was happening there. And since then, it's just grown and grown and grown. I just don't want people to think that, you know, we're leaving women's sport behind. Because when I watch either the Olympics or I watch the tennis or I watch the rugby, everything these days, even the commentary that you see with the football and everything, women are playing just as much a vital part as men, you know, even like, especially in commentary. They've added this extra element of like, you know, you know, just an X factor. And I think that council is not lacking in that. And I think Anthony, you did hit it on the head. And I think we're all supporting and we're all looking for women's sport to grow and grow and grow. And I think roundly setting, you know, the bar compared to other councils.
So if there's no further questions, I'll put it. But councillor, just one, sorry councillor Mattson, before you, I see your hand now. But just to let you know, I need the hand up on the screen because all I get is a little circle with plus 15. And you're the only face that I can see. So if you disappear, I won't be able to see you in the future. So just in case. And your mic's on. Off, sorry.
In, in closing the debate, I acknowledge the point made so very well by councillor DeRosa, sorry. Yes, we are doing a pretty good job at the moment. We are making many good investments, expanding our community resources to meet female participation as required. But the whole point of the 2020 recreational needs study was the recommendation that by 2031, there will be such an increase in female sports that we will have to make further provision. So yes, we're doing a good job at the moment, but the demand is going to become more intense in the run-up to 2031.
Cool. So now I will put it councillors. And what I'll do for the whole night, if you do want a division, just ask for a division. Otherwise, I'll just do the usual yay or nay. But if it does sound confusing, we'll just do a division. So all those in favour, say aye.
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 So now we move on to CS 35/21.
And excuse me, Mayor, sorry, I have a declaration on this particular matter. I apologise. Councillor Nielsen, the speaker in relation to NM 5621 is known to me through his involvement in the city of Randwick. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a mover for CS 35/21?
What is it?
I'll move it.
Yeah, I'll move it. Oh, yeah.
So moved by councillor Mattson, seconded by councillor Hamilton.
I'm happy for councillor Hamilton to be the mover if she wishes. Okay, I'll move it. Thank you. Can I just quickly ask a question, Mr. Mayor? I noted from Miss Rosen's speech that she raised the need for more female toilets catering catering to gymnastic students in the approved development that we're, project that we have underway. Is there any sort of avenue for increasing the supply of female toilets, noting her concern that young female students had particular needs?
Yeah, fair enough. And that's Mr. Clark, you think?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The current design as approved in the development application proposal is inclusive of the Building Certificates Australia compliance check and also an access consultant check. So whilst I note the comments by the speaker, there is provision for increased amenity within the facility should numbers increase by major competitions or, you know, particular functions of the use. But I do confirm that Gymnastics Centre has dedicated toilets and dedicated change rooms for business as usual activities.
Thank you.
And councillor Hamilton, seconded. Do you want to speak anymore, councillor Mattson or?
No, look, I think it's a great study. I think it allows us a scope to move forward. And I do think, as I've reiterated in the debate, I'm reiterating my debate from the previous motion. I think there will be a need for more female sports. I note the need to respond to climate change demands and that we may need more indoor sports as well. We are moving into very difficult times.
And councillor Hamilton, a seconded?
No, I think that the report is highly detailed. It's also reflective of the needs of our community right now. And yes, I take on points about the future and what we might need in the future. I think that we have a council that's heading in the right direction. And so I hope that everyone else supports this paper.
Cool, thank you. So councillors, any further debates? So I'll put it. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
I declare that carried. So now we go on to NM 52/21. And that is the motion from councillor Mattson. Need for legislative or regulatory change in response to July sewage overflows in.
Have a second that, Mr. Mayor, councillor.
Seconded by councillor Andrew.
Yes, councillors, I, like many councillors, have felt a great deal of frustration over the last couple of weeks in that it seems that because of a unique set of legislative and regulatory block problems that we could not, or Sydney Water could not intervene in a timely fashion to bring some sort of relief to that particular street. If it happened this time, then I think it's going to happen, it's highly likely it's going to happen again. Sewerage systems age, more demand as residential densities build up, and again, climate change. I do think that there is a need for the government to look at and find a mechanism by which either the local council or Sydney Water itself can directly and speedily intervene to bring about relief. Because as the speaker said, if it's viruses, if it's bacteria, an embarrassing health risk and on very public display. There must be a mechanism found whereby some authority, some figure can make a judgment as to whether the situation is dire enough to allow the local council or Sydney Water to directly intervene and fix the situation and then deal with the aftermath of individual residents' concerns. I think it has to be done.
Thank you. And as councillor Andrews is seconded?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I absolutely can totally concur with councillor Mattson in what he just said. And I'm happy to second his motion. I think it's a very important issue which needs to be looked at. So I congratulate councillor Mattson for bringing this motion forward.
Thank you, councillors. We've both been long-serving councillors. We understand the needs.
So councillors, I've got two speakers there. But before I move on to councillor DeRosa and councillor Shuri, I've just got to move to councillor, Mr. Kiriaku, who has an update about what is happening there at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, you might be aware, I did send an email around to all the councils a little bit earlier just indicating the background to this, to the situation and the issues that were raised by the residents as articulated by Miss Clinton. The issue with the line, it is a private sewer line and it services a number of properties in Carrington Road and in Rally Street. Being a private line, it also continues on and connects into the Sydney Water sewer system in Carrington Road and crosses Allison Road. Clearly, there is a temporary fix as is indicated by the speaker. And there would probably require to be a relining of the sewer line to ensure that it's ongoing sustainability. Let's, to be clear, councillors, the sewerage system in metropolitan Sydney is the sole responsibility of Sydney Water and state government. It really is beyond the scope of councils. And in terms of our capacity to be able to manage these sewerage systems, Sydney Water has the powers by which to take ownership of the asset and impose easements and to maintain its infrastructure. These are effectively, this is effectively a line that originated approximately 100 years ago when the subdivision was created. So councillors may know that on your own properties, you have your internal lines and they usually connect to a Sydney Water line, which captures all those internal lines. And they usually sit along those at the rear of blocks and picks up the lines from a number of properties. The issue with councillor Mattson's motion is that it seems to request that council be given these powers. These powers are available to state government. And the, these sort of powers, if they were to transfer to lower government, it would certainly be a significant cost burden. And I would also like to remind councillors that over many years now, low government industry has really resisted the effects of devolution of services from federal and state government as well as the cost shift burden. So there is that significant potential risk when councils are faced with these additional infrastructure costs. And also in recent times, councillors, you may note that there are changes proposed in terms of infrastructure contributions which further lessens council's capacity in this regard.
So, thank you, Mr. Kiriaku. Councillor DeRosa?
Kerry put it really, really good. I've seen so many times that disgusting event that happened at Coogee happened for what I do for a living during the day as a ranger when I'm investigating these things. And what I'm concerned about this motion is that if we take or if we sort of intervene within the direction of Sydney Water, you know, do we become the big brother and then they just keep flogging stuff off of us? Because I know just from, from history that, you know, Sydney Water is very quick to try and put things on council. And I think it would be a huge costly exercise if we started to, you know, to sort of try to get in, you know, on these things over Sydney Water. And then they would just pretty much wipe, wipe their responsibility off. Just got to be really careful.
Councillor Shuri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was absolutely horrified when I first saw those photographs. I can't believe that this is 2021 and raw sewage is running down the street. And we, as a council, are unable to do anything. I'm supporting this motion because I think we have to put some pressure on state water, Sydney Water. And if that comes through with the government, then we can't just allow this to happen and turn our backs and say, oh, gosh, this is going to be a lot of money. You know, this is just outrageous. 2021 and raw sewage is then being diverted by council into the drains that go straight into the sea? I mean, come on, we've got to do something.
Councillor, there's lots of hands, so I do know you're all there. So councillor Luxford, you are next.
Yeah, mine's a question.
Yeah, mine's a question. You know, I'm supportive and and, you know, councillor Shuri is correct. You know, in this day, this should not be happening. But just a question through to Director of City Services, I think, or to Kerry, sorry, I'm having a blank. I can just see faces everywhere. Like, what happens with this? In the past, we've had, you know, numerous issues with trees that have been planted out the front of people's houses that have crept in. We had a longstanding issue in in Milroy Avenue that went for 20 odd years before it's finally been rectified. We've, we had another in, I think, in Tressada Avenue where, you know, it was horrendous what was going on there. And there's been no compensation or there's nothing for our, for those residents, you know, like they get two plumbing trips a year and the rest of it is all at their own cost. So I guess what I'm saying is, or asking is, does this set a precedent for other issues that in the past we've just gone, bad luck, your problem, you have to fix, which, you know, it's not their tree that is causing the issue. But but the residents have had to, you know, bear sewage coming up through their houses, you know, out into the street, the whole box and die. So like, where do we sit, I guess, if, while I'm supportive, you know, because I don't think those residents that have paid in the past and who've had horrendous issues have had, you know, have been dealt a fair, fair deal because councils' insurance won't pay. So like, where do we sit with this? Moving through this motion, I guess, is what I want to know.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. They're slightly different circumstances in that there is a, that situation where there is a claim against council for for damages based on those tree roots. This is a circumstances where there is a private line without any particular ownership or responsibility associated with it. But council's position, and certainly we've done what we can to assist the residents in, you know, in trying to maintain and clean the footpaths, place a signage and and sandbag the area. And we've worked really hard and advocated on behalf of the residents to try and get Sydney Water. And they did come in and do that temporary fix. Our, we have also written to the the Minister for Water, Property and Housing, Melinda Pavy, and we are waiting on a response back. And in that correspondence, we are seeking that they do take ownership and ongoing maintenance of this line. So we'll need to wait and see what Sydney Water's response is in relation to that. But as I said, in terms of the motion, it's more about the responsibility of the state government and meeting its obligations to its, to its, to its citizens in terms of its responsibility in relation to the sewage system.
Okay.
Sorry, good. Councillor Nielsen?
Yes, thank you. It's really, I'm wondering whether in response to what Mr Kiriaku said in response to councillor Luxford's question, whether we should add another point or subpoint to councillor Mattson's motion. And that is, will, that councils and Sydney Water are financially compensated for their actions. So I just think it's, it's really important that when councils and Sydney Water carry out their responsibility, well, they're, they're carrying out a responsibility, whether it's theirs actually or not. It's a responsibility that needs to be carried out by organisations that are comfortable in doing this. But we need to be compensated by this. And if there's a question in terms of like, who's going to pay? Because as we know, this difficulty about who owns the line and blah, blah, blah. I think we need something like this as part of councillor Mattson and councillor Andrews' motion.
So councillor Nielsen, just before I put you on to Mr Kiriaku, so that's, you're seeking clarification on if either council will be compensated or Sydney Water is compensated by the private residents or?
No, I'm just asking that in response, that in the motion that we're putting forward that is being sent to the state MPs and state ministers requesting, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think that we could ask that where we say to, and that, so we just add, instead of a full stop at the end of ecology, we have, and councils and Sydney Water be financially compensated for their their actions in dealing with this issue or these issues.
By who? The residents or by Sydney Water themselves?
No, I think the stupid state government. You know, if nobody else is going.
Is that not Sydney Water?
Yeah, I don't want you to put Sydney, stupid Sydney, state government in there. But I think it's important that some, somebody is some organisation, some authority is going to compensate councils and Sydney Water if nobody is going to take ownership for these issues. But as other councillors have pointed out, this is, and as the speaker pointed out, this is a health hazard, huge health hazard, and it's got to be dealt with. So it's got to be dealt with, but it can't be always dealt with. And the responsibility and financial liability, responsibility held by councils. If you like, take out, well, I'll wait for councillor Mattson and councillor Andrews to accept whether, to see if they accept it as an amendment. But maybe we could, I should suggest taking out Sydney Water and just leave councils be financially compensated by the state government.
Mr Kiriaku, in your opinion, Mayor?
That that's really a matter for for councillors, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Mattson, do you accept?
Just speaking on the proposed amendment, I think the wording would be better that councils and Sydney Water would, under these reforms, be given the capacity to recover expenses from the private owners. I think that would deal with the concern of councillor Nielsen. Just speaking on the concern, six, 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 Derocha. It could be that we could remove any reference to councils in the third. Just floating this for agreement, that as a matter of urgency, council respond to the appalling July sewage overflow flows in Carrington Road by writing to state MPs and state members requesting legislative or regulatory changes that will allow Sydney Water to undertake immediate repair.
Sorry, councillor Mattson, you're cutting in and out unless it's my.
The reason I'm suggesting that it be put, sorry, at the moment, I am of the suspicion that perhaps Sydney Water is trying to blackmail councils to some degree on this. But they'll, they won't, that they will drag their feet on fixing the problem in order to get the councils to foot the bill. Look, that could be the case. So if we just make it so that it is Sydney Water that gets the extra power, that removes any excuse they might try and provide to us that they can't respond.
Well said.
Councillor Andrews, do you agree with that? A second up?
It's accepted, Mr Mayor.
And in that case, Mr Mayor, we then have to remove our, from the the new extra line councils and just started at Sydney Water.
Yep. So councillor Hamilton, you're up?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm all right. I, I wholeheartedly support action that will either immediately rectify or result in a long term solution for the residents that live in this area. I agree with all sentiment of horror and disgust at what they've had to put up with. I think it's, it is horrifying. I've had the same thing happen to my property in the past. Right on the doorstep, we had sewage pouring straight out onto the doorstep. And it was, unfortunately for us, it was our private line. It is, was definitely tree related. So I've been in this situation and we had to pay for that ourselves. I see the complexity with the private line being owned by 28 residents in a, in a distance further away from the the overflow. I note that the director has emailed us and I feel that the work that the council staff are doing to rectify this is, I believe, a better solution to what this motion is actually stating to do in that they have already written and their solution is to hand over the, let me just go straight to it from. So it's handing over the responsibility. So they're saying that Sydney Water takes ownership of the subject sewer line and undertakes the necessary repairs to ensure the pipe work operates effectively. I feel that that is the most appropriate pathway and the, and the better solution for these residents. And I feel that this solution, and in light of the director's information to us earlier, that this may undermine the work that the council staff are doing. So while I completely support any work at all to resolve this situation, I won't be voting for this motion tonight as I feel that the staff have already begun the work. And the work that they have already begun, in fact, mutes this motion's position and the action that this motion is asking the council staff to do. So it may even contradict what the council staff are trying to do. And maybe even I should put that, ask that question of the council staff, would this action of this motion undermine or contradict the action that they have already taken? Through you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Kiriaku?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion is seeking to obtain or to seek the government to implement legislation that changes the ability of Sydney Water to undertake these immediate repairs. In my opinion, they are available to Sydney Water currently. And those sort of powers, if they need to be enhanced, could be reviewed through, for example, a request to the minister. Certainly, council's view was that they, the long, best, better longer term solution to this would be to to seek the minister's acceptance of the unique sort of situation that we are in with this particular line. And also bear in mind that there will probably not be many circumstances in Sydney where these older lines are still there under sort of private ownership. And on that basis, that they would see that there would not be an unreasonable request in the circumstances, given the public health situation that arises from, from the damage to this line for them to to take on that that ownership.
Thank you. Now, I have councillors, I have councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, councillor De Souza, but councillor Nielsen has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's really a question in terms of how much sewage ended up down at Coogee Beach Place. Would one of the officers be able to fill us in in terms of that?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't have that, that exact quantity of, in terms of sewage. I'll have to take that on notice.
Have you any idea whether there was a lot and insignificant amount? We managed to put straw down or whatever else. Ways that we could have dealt with the issue as the sewage is pouring down the street?
We did try and mitigate that by placing sandbags and washing down the area as well as cleaning the footpaths.
And how quickly were we on to the problem? Like a day?
Mine is, yeah, my understanding, as soon as I noticed the the issue with the sewage, they undertook mitigating works as soon as, as soon as I could. I think it was very soon afterwards.
As soon as we were notified, basically, like within a couple of hours or half a day or?
Oh, look, I can't be exact about that, councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor Parker's wife, she's questioned.
Hello?
Bowen? Councillor Bowen?
Hello? Sorry, here I come. Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, look, I also was appalled to, you know, when I first was contacted and notified about this situation. It's a very difficult situation. It was, and I've got a question before I sort of indicated position. It was reported in the media that council, council had the power to order the owners of the 27 properties to fix the problem. I just wanted to find out if that was actually correct. So if the relevant officer could answer that question.
Thank you, sir. There are orders provisions under the P O E Act and the Low Government Act. But it would be difficult to issue those orders on on those properties and to identify clearly the responsibility of and ownership of the line. We are at this stage, as I've indicated, there is that line there. We don't have the details in in terms of the, clearly within their freehold title and identification of ownership of those, of that line. It is a line that has existed there and is servicing those properties and operates such as would any other internal sewer line. The the other issue about the orders as well, and that would need to be issued over a landowner. And that would depend on where the the blockage is, for example, and where you're ordering the works to to occur. So at this stage, I think, from looking at those potential powers in those orders, it was certainly not an easy way to resolve the matter. It was more a matter, I think, of getting the appropriate authority to intervene and take action as quickly as possible, which is Sydney Water.
Just a further question. As you indicated, that there's lots of, you know, every property obviously has access to the sewer line. But it's an unusual situation that an entire sewer line would be privately owned. Is that right?
Yes, yes, Mr Mayor, that's the case. As I said, usually you have your sewer diagram that you get from Sydney Water indicates your internal line, which is your responsibility. And that usually connects to a trunk sewer line which runs usually at the back of properties or out onto the street. And that's where the Sydney Water responsibility is. Now, these were anticipated, expected to be constructed around, you know, around 100 years ago when that subdivision was undertaken. And you may recall, there was during that time around Local Government Act and the responsibilities of different authorities. And so that may, may have been that the the relevant authority at that time hadn't actually gone in and declared the ownership over that particular line.
Thanks. Look, I think this is a very unusual situation. And I do find myself in agreement with councillor Hamilton. And I think the advice we received from the director this afternoon to effectively that the suggestion is that to call on Sydney Water to take ownership of this line and and fix it. I mean, it's an unusual situation that we've got a defective line that's feeding, it's meant to be feeding in to the Sydney Water network. I mean, it's not council's role. Sewage is not, sewage control management is not part of council's role. I'm just a bit concerned like with the wording of the motion. It says regulatory changes that will allow councils and Sydney Water, so both of us? I don't quite understand that wording, to undertake immediate repair works on privately owned sewer pipes. And then I just think. And then I just think in this situation. Someone's, someone's interrupting me, Mr Mayor.
Oh no, sorry councillor Bowen. I think what councillor Mattson means is he changed, he changed something. I, I, councillor Mattson, I know what you're going to say, so I'll fill it in. Councillor Mattson changed the body of the text, but I think the heading and I've just noticed as a matter of urgency, councillor respond, that I think, like respond by appealing to stayed, but I think it's in the heading didn't get changed. But the body of the text got changed and councillor got removed. Councillor Bowen.
Okay, all right. Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I missed that sort of thing. Okay, well, in that case, but I, I would ask the mover to consider what, including, and I would support that, that what was advised to us this afternoon to call on Sydney Water to take ownership.
I'm happy to add that as an extra point.
And, and fix it. Let's not muck around. I mean, this is a health issue, an environmental issue, and it should be fixed. And it's not, it's not sufficient for Sydney Water. It's not reasonable to say to our residents, oh, sorry, it, it, this is some historical quirk from 100 years ago and, and tough, we can't fix it. I mean, public health, I mean, we all know at the moment what a concern it is for our community. This is just unacceptable. So I, and I apologize for, I've seen, not, not appreciating that amendment. I apologize to councillor Mattson and everyone. But I think this is the way to go. It, it, this is just a historical quirk. And we can't have our residents, our community, our environment being put at risk because of some, you know, historical sort of situation that's, that's been handed down to us from over 100 years ago. So I'll support the motion.
Councillor Mattson and councillor Andrews, do you accept that?
Yeah, I, I think the wording should be that in this specific incident, council calls on, yeah.
Yeah, specific. So that way, okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good call.
Okay. And councillor D'Souza, and then I think we'll go to a call.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There are so many issues at stake here. We talk about a duty of care to our residents and a duty of care, we need to address this and we need to address it immediately. There's also a public interest issue. That is very important. As councillor Bowen points out, there's a health issue and an environmental issue. So we as a council, as a responsible council must act. Now also what one must consider is the law of trespass. The law of trespass doesn't allow anybody to go onto private property. Again, legislation must address these concerns, must give protections to the people who will address this problem. So I will support councillor Mattson and councillor Andrews because it's a responsible motion. And more importantly, our community is suffering and in, in this age, in this time of COVID, where we know the seriousness of pandemia and we know the seriousness of viruses, we shouldn't have an environment which might allow or support bacterial growth or any other form that could create a health hazard. So, Mr councillor Mattson and councillor Andrews, you have my full support. And councillor Bowen is well aware of the law of trespass and also do, public interest and a duty of care to our community. I was wondering, and I'm happy, I'm happy as it is, but should we be addressing the law of trespass to the relevant officer? If not, I'm happy to support it the way it is. But my concern is private property and the invasion of it or the, the right of the owner, because this is democracy itself that is under challenge. They should have the right to say yes or no. If not, if it endangers the community, then legislation or protection should be in place to allow Sydney Water to do their job and their duty. I'll leave it at that. But if someone could answer my question about whether we should include the law, address the law of trespass in this motion, I would be very grateful, Mr Mayor.
Ms Kurata.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In terms of the powers in relation to access to private property, there's certain laws that sort of benefit some state agencies and, and in terms of acquiring assets and, and creating easements over them. In these circumstances, I think Sydney Water has sort of sought to get some agreement from those owners and ask council to assist them and, and certainly, and we can certainly do that. But ultimately, if it's deemed to be a, an infrastructure of a public benefit, that it should be in the care, control and management of, of the state, then there certainly is powers by the state to, to intervene and seek easements over, over that land and, and take ownership. And of course, there would be certain restrictions on those private owners, but also significant benefits as well, because given the potential obligations on them and the burdens of costs associated of having to maintain and ensure that that system is not impacting throughout their whole subdivision.
I'm quite happy with that answer, Mr Mayor, and I'd be supporting the motion in its entirety, the way it's written at the moment. Thank you.
So councillor Mattson, do you mind if I put it, if you miss out on the close?
Certainly, I'd just close the debate by saying I think it's a better motion than what I brought forward. And I thank the councillors who put input into it and expressed opinions. Thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
Councillors, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those again. I declare that carried. So now we move on to N M fifty six slash twenty one, no summation, councillor Roberts. Could you shed village community consultation?
I'll second that one. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
That's okay, councillor.
Turn my heater off. Councillors, I'm just bringing this motion tonight in the name of good practice. And that's when you do a trial, you do a post-trial investigation and report. So that's simply what I'm asking for tonight, councillors. I'm not asking to reimpose the arrangement or return to what it was. I'm just asking for a post-trial report so we can get good data moving forward with, with how that trial went. And maybe that could help us inform future, future debate. So councillors, I think it's important that we do hear from the residents that were affected and also the, the businesses that were affected, both positive and negative. We heard from one business owner tonight, for example, and I thank him for his input. And I think it's important that all businesses get an opportunity to put in their input, plus local residents. So with, with that in mind, that's simply why I put forward this, this notice of motion. Now, the long-term future of Coogee Bay Road is, is a pretty critical question for Randwick because Coogee Beach is probably the jewel in our crown. And we have to take it seriously about the future of that Coogee Bay Road area. And that has amazing potential for the future. And that potential needs to be pedestrian friendly. And the pedestrian needs to rule over the car in the future of that Coogee Bay Road bottom area there around the beach to make that area a positive vibrant place for families to come and gather, to engage with the, with the environment and with the city, with businesses. So that's what I personally would like to see in the long-term future. This is simply a trial. We did a trial. We've done the trial. Now let's do a post-trial report, councillors. That's simply all I'm asking for here. Thank you for your time.
Councillor Hamilton.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And I concur with all points that councillor Roberts has made. And I do believe that all speakers help us to open our eyes and understand the impact from a wide-ranging viewpoints. And I do take on board the, the speaker's comments. And if there are concerns about the appropriateness or the effectiveness of community consultation, then of course, we as a council should respond accordingly and do what we can to ensure that the information we have and the action that we take is, it comes from all of the community and they have an opportunity to express their concerns. So I think that this motion is really about consolidating what was a, first and foremost, I think it was a fantastic idea. I haven't shied away from, from a bias for this initiative. But secondly, some, a little bit of contention around the, the results through the survey itself. So we can put the concerns to rest, I believe, and look to the future and put this initiative back in place, even if it's a second trial in the future, next summer, the coming summer, and put it to the residents and the businesses again. I agree with councillor Roberts that this whole precinct really should be about the pedestrians. It should be about bringing the community together, giving them an opportunity to spend more time at the shops and frequenting all of the, the businesses and restaurants and being able to spend that time leisurely and, and in that open space. Because it really comes down to the fact that we hit COVID, we were faced with something just completely foreign to us. And this was, I believe, one of the best solutions that we could have done for everyone involved. But I am biased and I'm one person. And so if we can get that report, find out more from our residents and, and put to rest any contention around the, the results, because I think that the results were overwhelming. And, and so we really should be looking at this project in the future and not let it die and, and become something in the past.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I support this motion, but I was hoping that the motion would have gone a little bit further with the current COVID pandemic, which, which is happening with Delta. I was one of the councils that, that voted to keep the shared village down at Coogee a bit longer because it's times like this now, but the community needs that extra space down at Coogee Bay Road. And it's disappointing that we as a council took away that shared village atmosphere on Coogee Bay Road, noting that over 75% of the Coogee community supported the extension of a Coogee Shared Village project. So it, it's disappointing that in times like this, with lockdown, with restrictions, that the Coogee Shared Village is not there today in current circumstances. I'll support the motion, but I was hoping that the motion would have gone a bit further in reinstating the shared zone down in Coogee Bay Road, because I think we really need this at the moment.
Councillor Mattson.
My concerns reflect the, the address from the speaker. I think he had a point. It would have been perhaps unbalanced if we were not prepared to accept what he's saying. So, look, I'd like to suggest an amendment that a new point E be put after the current point D, the current E be pushed down and that that amendment be that the mechanisms of the community consultation will be maintained under the control of council officers with no outside input in terms of harvesting or presenting input by other third parties. What I mean by this is that it will be a consultation conducted by council officers, either via Facebook or the council website or e-news or letterbox drops. I think if we do this, we will remove any concerns that residents might have had that a third party, such as an interested business owner, might have skewed the results by inappropriately pushing for customers to have a decided opinion that helps the business owner. I, I just don't think how we, we can sustain criticism from the community when the member and a representative of the precinct committee comes before us and says, no, there was a very big hole in the, in the design of your consultation. And I said, there must have been, there would have been a hole. I think we need to close that hole and that we will have a much more defendable outcome, whatever it is.
I, I, I actually don't understand. I know you tried to clarify what that amendment is, but I, I actually don't understand what it means. All I'm putting forward is for the council to conduct a post-trial consultation and report. And that would be assumed that the council would do it. So I think the amendment is redundant.
Well, I would ask for a second then, Mr Mayor.
Happy to take advice from.
I'll second. Happy to second.
From Mr, from Josh, someone.
I don't think he's on there. Do you want me to take advice and to see whether it is a double, might be a double negative, even double positive, it's saying the same thing? Is that what you're saying, councillor Roberts?
Find out if it's benign or not. Like, will this severely impact our ability?
I'll put that straight to the GM then. I'll get the GM to answer it. Is that virtually the same, A and E? Or the amendment, I should say? If she's there. Yep. Your mic's on.
Through, Mr Matt, can you just clarify the, the confusion?
Councillor Roberts has got councillor staff, notes councillor staff recommend the extension of the. It's changed.
D in the amendment.
Conduct the community consultation of these four households.
Yes, I'm adding, I'm adding a clause. I'm not removing all the other clauses. I'm adding a clause.
Yeah, we're just saying, is it similar or virtually the same? Is that right, councillor Roberts? It's virtually what you're doing anyway.
Okay, so this is my question. Councillor Mattson has asked to insert a new point E, which is the amendment writing there. And then the current E becomes F. And he's basically saying the council consultation needs to ensure that the mechanisms of the community consultation be maintained under the control of council officers with no outside input from third parties in providing information. So I'm not too sure what that means. And does that in any way make the job of council staff more difficult to conduct a community consultation?
Through you, Mr, Mr Mayor. Can I just ask councillor Mattson to clarify what he means in regards to input by third parties?
Essentially, I do not want an overzealous waiter to sit customers down and then push a petition on them and insist they sign it. That's essentially it. So if we remove that possibility by using a mechanism that doesn't allow for that, if a petition is to be, for example, used, then it would be distributed and controlled by the council rather than being given to a third party, such as a waiter or a business owner or somebody else to run around and put pressure, inappropriate pressure for a outcome that suits essentially one party. So I just want to maintain the credibility of council's community consultation on this issue with observers. So it's just the precinct committee.
Now, now that I understand that, GM, I'll just jump in. I assume that council staff don't subcontract their surveys to to restaurants and businesses and the like. So I'm, that's my understanding. So GM.
Through, through you, Mr Mayor. Council's communication staff use, use a number of different methods in order to survey the community in relation to any particular initiative that we might have. That might include surveys on your site or it may include surveys that are posted out in the mail as. Uh, that might include surveys on your site, or it may include, uh, surveys that are posted out in the mail, as we did last time. We surveyed people in regards to the Coogee, um, Shared Village project. Um, when we do send out surveys, particularly if they are paper surveys to fill out, we, we don't have control over, um, over, you know, who, how, how people fill those in or, or who they may be, um, shared with. Um, so the, the only way to, um, avoid or the only way to ensure that, um, there is direct consultation would be to do a, um, a telephone survey or something along those lines where its, um, representative sample is used and, um, and there's not a more widespread, um, delivery of, of surveys for people to, to use. That would be my, my thought on it. Um. You know, you always run the risk when you put a survey out to the community that, that particular groups may, um, may try and um, get others to, to fill in the survey. That's, that's the nature of, um, that's the nature of.
Can I just confirm, can I just confirm, GM, that, uh, council won't explicitly ask third parties to, um, distribute, uh, survey material though. It'll be a, the survey material will be sent to individuals on that basis, that, that, that they will respond individually.
Generally, council would directly send, um, send the surveys or survey links to, um, the residents as we did last time.
Yeah. So, so if I accept this amendment, um, I can assume that you'll still send out surveys directly to, um, the local residents of Eastward as per the, as per the motion, and also you'll send surveys to the businesses of Coogee Bay Road.
We would interpret the amendment to mean that council would distribute the survey uh, and, and would not, um, use other, other parties, including businesses to distribute survey.
Okay, on that basis.
Which is what we've done in the past.
Yeah. So on that basis, I accept that amendment.
Okay. So it's no longer an amendment. So, um, so now councillors, I've got, still got councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, councillor Nielsen and councillor Shuri. So councillor Parker.
And, and Mister Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I'm, I'm happy to, to put it after two for, two against.
I, I count you and councillor Hamilton as two for. Councillor Parker, are you for or against?
Uh, I'm speaking against the motion.
Okay, go.
Okay. Look, thank you. I, I'm actually speaking against this motion because it, it is, in my view, it's a bit of a nonsense. Um. The, the reason why, and, and I just, I just want to be clear, I actually thought that the trial of the Coogee Bay Road, um, uh, Shared Village, um, what, what was a success and was quite an interesting, um, experiment in public domain. My position as to why I did not support its continuation was because it was a temporary measure, um, and temporary measures, um, uh, by definition, um, are not how council should, um, be going about it. It, it's public works. What, why I think that this, um, motion is, in, in my view, unsupportable is because what we're asking uh, residents to do is to comment on the success of a measure which they have already commented on while it was occurring and while it was present there. Um, if, if we were to support a further survey on this, all we're doing is, is presenting to the community. Um, the same question which we already did and we already formed a decision on. Uh, I would strongly suggest to councillor Roberts, if what he actually intended to do was to suggest a permanent solution around that, he should simply say that rather than going back to the community time and time again onto a project which is no longer there. Um, a more appropriate manner I would suggest is you consult with the community when you have a proposal. Um, there is no proposal and I would not support a temporary measure, Coogee Bay, because it's temporary. We, we just keep doing this every year. It seems ridiculous. We just, at point, you come up with a design, you finalize it, you put to a community, and then you decide whether or not to do it. You don't come back every 12 months, um, with a temporary measure and then a question, uh, in the winter months, did you like the temporary measure? That's all that this is proposing and I don't, I don't support it in that form. Uh, um, I, I would strongly suggest if you did want something, um, put it to the council, uh, and then we'll decide on it and that'd be the final, um, decision of the matter, rather than asking the community what they think when we already have that information here and they commented when the survey, when, when the works were in place. And you have the results. So I'm not really sure what this would achieve.
Um, councillor Bowen, you're speaking against?
Yeah, against.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, look, I, I echoed the sentiments of councillor Parker. I'll just add a few comments. Um, uh, and I think he, he's right. I mean, in this sense that this issue does seem to come up all the time in various guises. And I think once again, we caught a glimpse here and there from the speakers in support, um, of what, what the real agenda here is. It's, it's, um, out, permanent outdoor dining, changing the, um, uh, the, uh, the traffic route on Coogee Bay Road, uh, which also has flow and effects to public transport. Um, I, I'm aware of the results of the survey, but I'm also aware of the results of the community I live in, I think, um, and, uh, I regularly, you know, I live in, I live in Eastward and I, I feel I know the, um, pulse of the community. And I don't believe the support for the, um, there was an understanding of the temporary changes, which is exactly what they were. Um, there was an understanding of the, the need for it, um, and what was thought to be achieved. And, you know, unfortunately, we thought it had been achieved, but, uh, now we find that, um, you know, we're back in, in lockdown. And I think just if I can just briefly speak on that, it was suggested by one of the speakers that wouldn't it be great, or words to the effect, if, if the changes were still there now? I think we need to be so careful as councillors in leadership position in the community of offering opinions on what are public health issues, because I don't know that that is correct. I don't, my understanding is that the best thing for all of us to be doing is staying at home, not to be, um, uh, you know, mingling out in the community. So I just urge caution councillors to, about offering opinions on what is a very serious public health crisis our community is facing at the moment. Um, the other point I noticed, but just returning to the motion, I noticed is it suggests that a report be brought back in August. I mean, one month away, given the situation, I just don't think that's practical. Um, but, but most of all, the thing that troubled me was this suggestion about getting rid of the car at a Coogee Bay Road. Now, I'm all for, for getting rid of cars where it's appropriate, but I'm also all for businesses. And we heard in the past that the emphasis on, you know, creating outdoor space, um, even though parking may not have been lost, uh, in any great measure with that, there was certainly a change to traffic and businesses suffered. And they came to us and said, we are suffering. And so, and the threat was to the diversity of businesses that support my local community in, in Eastward, in that area. And, and my concern would be that the effect of what was told to us tonight, not necessarily what's in this motion, but what we understand the intention to be by those who are supporting it would be to lose that diversity that provides key services to my local community in Eastward. And so my, I agree with councillor Parker, this is, this has been done with, um, the results there. Uh, the council just spent a fortune upgrading Coogee Bay Road. That was an eight or a nine year project. Yet here we go, we want to have another go. Um, so I just, uh, I can't find it in my, in myself to support this, um, motion. Uh, if, if, as councillor Parker says, if the councillors want a big change at Coogee, then they need to put the motion forward, not put it forward in this sort of, um, unusual way, uh, latching onto parts of a temporary, uh, trial that is, is long since concluded. So I won't be supporting it.
So councillor Roberts asked for it to be put. Uh, councillor Hamilton, do you second that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I, I would like to ask how feasible, um, bringing a report back to the August meet, council meeting with results is. I'll through you, Mr. Mayor, to the relevant council officer.
I'm happy to accept September. If that's going to help people with their voting.
It's usually done by communications via the general manager.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it would be very difficult to provide, to do a consultation and provide, um, results to an August meeting.
I'm happy to, to amend it to September, Mr. Mayor.
Would September be possible? Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the relevant officer.
Go to GM.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, September could be possible. Uh, what I would say to council is our communications team currently has quite a lot of consultation that we are undertaking. Um, so if council was to pass this, uh, motion tonight, we would have to consider where that fits in the, in the, in the scheme of priorities uh, in order to determine whether it could get back to September.
Okay. So councillors, I'll, I'll put it. I could have a feeling, will I go straight to a division? Cause I've got a feeling I'm going to get yeses and nos from all over the.
Yes, division, please. Yes, please, division.
So I'll go around the horse. You councillor Hamilton?
Four.
Four. Councillor Shury?
Against.
Councillor Nielsen?
Against.
Councillor Luxford?
Against.
Councillor Parker?
Against.
Councillor Andrews?
Four.
Councillor Bowen?
Against.
Councillor Mattson?
Four.
Councillor Roberts?
Four.
Councillor Rocha?
Four.
Four with a September. Is that there?
Yeah, that's on there. Uh, uh, Mr. Kelly changed it. And councillor De Souza?
Four.
So that's, let me just do it count.
How about your vote, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, and the mayor is against, and I think I'm the deciding vote. Is that right? Six four and six against. It was. So I declare that lost.
Good.
So, um, now we go to, we'll go straight onto the papers. So councillors, I commend Mayor O'Minute, MM slash twenty one, support for Meals on Wheels. I had a, a letter of support from Randwick Meals on Wheels, which is a, a very fine institution that's been here for a long time.
Is that twenty two?
Basically, um, funding has changed where they will be funded in arrears rather than in future and that does not suit their business at all. And a new minimum meal amount of $7.50 does not work in with their, uh, balance sheet, so to speak. So it's a very fine institution and if councillor De Souza, you'd like to speak?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you said twenty one or twenty two? You said twenty one.
So MM twenty two slash twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I fully support your mayor o'minute because as it is, as it is chronicled in the mayor's, mayor o'minute, it expresses the importance of nutrition for older Australians who wish to remain living at home. I was on the board of Meals on Wheels in Matrawal for many years and I saw the benefit the community got from a, such a scheme. I myself was delivered and there was a man who would order the same dish every week. It was chicken cacciatore. I hope I've said that right. After about the 10th visit, I said to him, George, you know, we, we have other things you can order. Why do you always order chicken cacciatore? He said, I don't eat it. I give it to my dog. I said, your dog? He said, I ordered this dish because I see you every Wednesday and you're the only person I ever see. You're the only person I ever talk to. Mr. Mayor, the, the food is delivered, but what we also delivered, and I said that to my other collectors, is we offered compassion and we addressed loneliness. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, this mayor o'minute has my full support because it offers not just food, but also hope to many and an opportunity, as I said, to address loneliness as well. Well done, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And well said, councillor De Souza. So any further speakers? So I'll commend that to you. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. I declare that carried. So now we move on. Oh. Oh, so urgent business, sorry. Urgent business? Any urgent business?
No.
Okay. So now we'll go to Inseri Artan and I assume you'll have to take off your, uh, or everyone take their mics off and I'll try to listen out to the call. So, um, CP forty five slash twenty one, homeless versus sport.
I would like to speak on that, Mr. Mayor, please.
Challenge councillor De Souza. CP forty six slash twenty one, community partnerships funding program. Unchallenged. CP forty seven slash twenty one.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, councillor Andrews.
Andrews. CP forty eight slash twenty one. That's, that's unchallenged. CP forty nine slash twenty one.
Yes, councillor Roberts.
Councillor Roberts. CP fifty slash twenty one. Forming strategy. We've done that. Sorry, we've already done that. Uh.
Huh? CP fifty twenty one?
Councillor Nielsen.
We, we haven't done that one yet.
Councillor Mattson. Councillor Nielsen. So I was confusing with the other one. I apologize. So councillor Nielsen, CP fifty slash twenty one.
Second it, councillor Mattson.
I'll move thirty three, Mr. Mayor, councillor Andrews, challenge it.
Oh, come on, that's not.
One stop, because I'm still at thirty one. CS thirty one slash twenty one. Unchallenged. Thirty two slash twenty one. Unchallenged.
I'll challenge the next one.
CS thirty three slash twenty one.
Councillor Roberts, challenge.
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 Councillor Andrews.
Challenge.
Councillor Andrews.
Councillor Parker.
CS thirty four slash twenty one.
It was councillor Parker, I think.
Informative, informing strategy?
I, yep.
Which, what one?
So CS.
Thirty four.
Thirty four slash twenty one.
Yes, I'll challenge it.
He's, he's sorry.
Roberts.
Was that Roberts? Okay, sorry. There's three voices that sound similar.
Yes.
Um, CS, that's the one we did before. CS thirty five slash twenty one. CO twenty nine slash twenty one.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, you've just done that to finally challenge a CEO. That's councillor Luxford, was it?
Yeah.
CO thirty slash twenty one.
Challenge.
Councillor Hamilton?
Yep.
CO thirty one slash twenty one. Unchallenged.
I'll challenge thirty two.
CO thirty.
Challenge councillor Parker.
Councillor.
Challenge councillor Parker.
CO thirty three slash twenty one.
I'll, I'll challenge that. Councillor Andrews.
Oh, challenge it? Yeah. Um, Andrew.
So that was thirty two and thirty three, Mr. Mayor, councillor Andrews, is that right?
No.
Thirty three, man.
So do I have someone to, uh, move the, uh, challenge on?
I'll second this one.
Seconded by councillor Luxford.
Oh.
So we go into the.
My voice does not sound like councillor Luxford just saying.
Mine's louder.
Before yours.
CP, CP forty five slash twenty one, councillor De Souza?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to speak on that. Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
Yeah, I think, um, there was a matter I declared a non-significant, non-procurnity interest in it that was moved, CP forty seven to twenty one.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that probably going back? I mean, it's, I, I, I know I'm recorders voting. I don't think it matters. There's no, no significant pecuniary or interest.
We haven't started that yet.
Oh, haven't we graded on that?
No, no.
Oh, that's out for debate. My apologies, I'll be quiet.
That's okay.
Anyway.
Um, so councillor De Souza, CP forty five slash twenty one, homeless is support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, loneliness and homelessness are becoming more and more prevalent in our community. Needless to say, loneliness and homelessness amputate the spirit and destroy the soul of a community. As a community, we must act to protect those vulnerable people and send a clear message. We care and we, as a community, will all help. I hope councillors, you will all assist council in its campaign to address these two soul destroying imposters, homelessness and loneliness. I am very impressed with the report and the business paper and I fully support it and encourage you all to support it. And I recommend the report in its entirety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor De Souza, do I have a second up?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Councillor Andrews, second it.
My thing wasn't working.
And councillor De Rocha, do you have a?
I hope you're talking about your microphone. I hope you're talking about your microphone.
Do you have something to say, councillor De Rocha?
Thanks, Noel. Um, I think this, um, I was really glad to see this report. I think it, um, flows, um, really well in support of the motion that I put well at the start of the year in regards to, to the homeless out in our societies. Um, I, I work with homeless nearly every single day. And I work with people that don't have homes. Both of them like to, you know, to say that they're different. Some of them believe that their home is on the street. Others, you know, I guess, um, you know, through difficulties in life, um, you know, over amounts of anxiety and stress, you know, I see them out on the street. Others who, you know, we've had in, you know, fighting wars, et cetera, they're at that, they just want to be alone. But one thing that, you know, um, I, I see a lot, and it takes sometimes a lot of times before they, they trust me and open up to talk to me is, you know, when we say that people can reach out, when you talk to a lot of these people, um, they won't reach out. Um, that they, it's not that they're afraid, they're just in embarrassed and some of them are just too angry. And I think this report from council goes a long way into us, you know, um, you know, being the one that goes and reaches out, getting the right groups to, to, to reach out. And, um, like, oh, I, I get shivers just every time I hear something, you know, when it comes to homeless, because whether it's young, old, middle age, I, I see that everywhere. And I commend council for this report.
Uh, councillor Bowen? Councillor Bowen? I'll switch to councillor Andrews.
Sorry about that.
You're right, Nat, sorry, okay, you're back. Did you wish to speak?
No.
Uh, okay. And so, so councillor Andrews, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews here. Look, Mr Mayor, I, um, commend, I commend, um, this report, but it's quite interesting. I think it should be noted, um, that in the Randwick City Council area, um, in two thousand and twenty, um, there were six homeless people in, um, living in the city. And now, now in two thousand and twenty one, we have twenty. Um, this is a great concern. And I, I, I thank this report for bringing this to our attention because I didn't, I wasn't aware of the amount of homelessness in our city. And I, um, I think we should all note that we have twenty homeless people living in our city, which is an increase of fourteen from the previous count.
And that's the ones we know about.
So councillors, I'll put it, so all those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, who that carried? So then there was CP forty seven slash twenty one, councillor Andrews?
Yes, um, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I'm happy to move the, um, recommendation on the business paper. I just wanted some, um, clarification at first instance. I would like to speak on this matter as well, but I'm happy to move, um, the recommendation on the business paper, which is to note this report.
I'll, I'll second them.
Do I have a second up? Yeah, councillor Anderson, second it?
Can I just, I'm going to move away from the.
Oh, that's right, yes, sorry, councillor.
Can someone text me when you're, um, back on?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Um, just some clarification, um, Mr Mayor, if we can. I note the executive summary shows that the total development assessment legal cost for two twenty, two twenty one is in the vicinity of seven hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty three. Um, but if we go to page nineteen, oh, sorry, page eighteen of the report, it, it states that the, um, legal cost for the last two years and the projected cost for two twenty, two twenty one are one million and twenty nine thousand, hundred and fifty three. Can we just get some clarification as to what that means?
Yeah, that was my question as well.
Yep, um, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. The, the seven hundred and twenty nine thousand i- is the figure excluding, um, the in-house legal costs? And that, that was included in for comparison purposes in the resourcing strategy section of the report to give you an indication of, um, the costs when we were running a, a panel of solicitors and, um, and didn't, um, actually, uh, have our in-house, um, solicitor, um, commencing with council until, oh, it was October two thousand and nineteen. So it just gives you a comparison and, and does, um, apples with apples.
I just a further, and just a further question, if I may, um, Mr Mayor. I note, um, in the report that, um, that out of the forty one appeals, um, twenty seven of those, an agreement was reached between the parties. Um, can we just get some clarification? And, um, does that mean that, um, there was an agree? So there was an agreement, um, by council and the, um, appellate?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yes, um, there is the court requirement to enter into a conciliation conference, um, with the applicant and to discuss the contentions that council files, um, why the application should be refused or whether there's a lack of information. Um, and through that process, um, the, um, in all these instances, the applicant then submits amended plans to address council's issues. And if those amendments then meet, um, our requirements in, in terms of our planning policies and maintaining the, the amenity, um, of joining neighbouring properties, as well as the integrity of those standards. Um, and those, um, those plans are then consented to, and there's an agreement between the parties. Um, the commissioner still needs to, um, consider those amendments and whether they, um, uh, are worthy of, um, issuing a consent call. Um, so that's effectively the process that is followed in relation to those matters.
Uh, and just a further question, if I can, to, uh, Mr Kiriaku. Um, um, could you say that, um, that a lot of applicants are now filing in the Land and Environment Court after the, um, forty day deemed refusal? Um, it, as it's quicker to, um, go through court rather than going through, um, council's, um, planning process?
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. No, that, that's certainly not the case in that, um, that, yes, there are significant proportion that are filing, um, appeals after the forty days. Um, and that's largely from the point of view of applicants, um, knowing that they are beyond the applicable, um, development controls and are seeking to, um, see to what extent they can convince the court of their, um, the merits of their application. Um, in terms of timeframe, um, the court, um, in, in, in having to deal with, uh, quite a number of matters, um, and certainly have engaged, uh, further commissioners to address the, um, the, the amount of proceedings that are, um, afoot in the court. Um, the conciliation conferences certainly don't, um, and the ultimate appeals and that process would take, um, approximately, um, yeah, it's anything between six to nine months. So, so really, um, it's a matter of once, once they are in that process, then through the, uh, through the consideration conference, the amendments, the further exhibition process that needs to occur when, um, uh, mender plans are lodged in certain circumstances. Um, certainly if the, if the applicant, um, worked with council and to the point where they would accept, um, at an earlier stage, what the preliminary issues the council have raised with the applicant, um, they would certainly, um, be in a better position than having to go through the court process.
Thank you.
And, um, councillor Hamilton, do you want to say a second to do any add to anything?
No, I reserve my right, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so we'll put it, all those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Carried, can someone please let councillor Bowen? Okay.
Did that have seconded by Star Reynolds?
Oh, Hamilton. Oh, yeah, you're right, sorry, I didn't see that. That's quite hard.
Well spotted. The other half's missing.
Yeah.
That's disrespectful.
Uh, councillor Bowen's back, is he?
Yes, I'm back.
Yep, okay. So now we have CP forty nine slash twenty one, councillor Roberts, you challenge?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, take the opportunity to, to move this.
Is that councillor Nielsen seconding?
Yes, thank you.
I thought it was De Rocha.
Nielsen, go ahead, councillor Roberts.
At the risk of, uh, making the night later than it needs to be, I just wanted to say, um, this is an excellent, uh, report. And, uh, it's in alignment with what council has resolved previously from multiple, uh, motions from councillors, including from myself about single-use plastics and the, uh, danger it has to, uh, marine life. So obviously it's good to move those motions, but, um, how that actually happens in real life? You know, this, this report sort of answers some of those questions. So, uh, I, I commend the report. I congratulate Peter Manganov and, uh, Mark Bush, um, for being involved, I believe. Um, their names are at the back of the report there. So, um, yeah, that, that's all I want to say.
Uh, councillor Nielsen?
Just, yeah, just repeat the points. Repeat. Sorry, repeat the points that, um, councillor Roberts has made. And I'm particularly pleased for our council officers because I think the two officers that, um, councillor Robinson has referred to, uh, to Mr Manganov and to, uh, Mark Bush, it's, um, they'll be really enjoying doing this and fulfilling this. And I think it's a fantastic advertisement for our council and I, I really commend this report. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah. So councillors, I'll just, oh, councillor De Rocha, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I fully commend this report. Um, this computer, I feel I'm knocking it on the head. I really wanted to second this, um, I'm so passionate about what's on there. Um, I really feel now council, team council is just, just showing again and again and again how great they are. And I think that, um, you know, this report will really show, you know, um, other councillors and all environmental groups that we are serious about protecting our environment, you know, um, so, you know, great work to all council staff involved.
So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried.
Uh, Mr Mayor, could I quickly, um, make you aware of a conflict of interest I've just spotted for myself in confidential item CP fifty one of twenty one?
Oh, okay, yeah?
I'm, um, a member of the Sydney Eastern City Planning Panel. I'll be taking no part in the debate on this matter. And will not, and will move away from the, uh, computer during the debate.
Right, thank you, councillor Mattson. So CP.
Councillor Mattson, sorry. On my, um, my headphones. Yes, I'm on the panel. Which, and the motion, which motion was that?
Unfortunately, we can't discuss it too much because it's confidential item CP.
Oh, right, yes, 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 yeah.
So I suggest you declare one as well.
Thank you, yes, I know, I was looking for that. Um, yeah, please add me, uh, to a similar declaration as councillor Mattson. Thank you.
And councillor Roberts, you're not needed this time, so I don't need to declare.
Yeah, I was wondering that on the alternate, you know, like, where do you draw the line? So I'll have to think about it.
Okay, well, we need when we get there. Um, so CP fifty slash twenty one, councillor Nielsen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and councillors. I'm actually wanting to move a deferral for a briefing on this particular matter. And, um, the matter to come back to the August council meeting. And the reason I'm proposing the deferral is that there are a few concerns that I have about the policy. They're more to do with clarity rather than, um, anything major. But I just feel it's better to discuss. But if, um, people do not want the deferral, then I do have various amendments I'd like to put forward. Or would people prefer that I put forward the amendments that I'm thinking of? That they might think are worthy of discussion further, or would they rather I put them now? I guess I'm in your hands, really, Mr Mayor.
Um, Mr Mayor.
I'll second if, you know, for councillor Nielsen should defer or be the way to go.
Well, I move the, uh, this matter on the business paper if someone else has not already moved it, or I'll second it if necessary. And, uh, but here what her amendments are.
Okay, I'll put forward the proposal, actually sent them to Mr Kelly earlier. So, um, if you look in the business paper on page thirty four, and you'll see that, uh, strategic, um, approach two point three. So currently it says transform Blenheim House into a cultural hub and ensure at least three of the four studio spaces are used for local artists, performers, and a minimum of a fifty percent of exhibition rehearsal time for local artists by two thousand and twenty four. I'm concerned about the, uh, numbers that are proposed for local. I don't have a problem if everybody's local, but I just find it's, um, of a concern that, uh, we're putting such a high specification. So my proposed amendment would be to transform Blenheim House into a cultural hub and ensure at least two of the four studio spaces are used for local artists slash performers and a minimum of twenty five to thirty percent of exhibition rehearsal time for local artists by two thousand and twenty four.
Oh, Mr Mayor, um, but I've changed my mind. I think I would support deferral. This is sounding a bit complex to me. I'm sorry to be a, a problem, but.
Yeah, right.
I'm happy for now, for it to be deferred and councillor Nielsen to be able to put, uh, our arguments to us.
That'd be great. And, and I'm quite happy for us to have a briefing, a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Briefing and then it come back to the other thing. Because I'd rather that we're all across the same wording. Um, and I think it's easier for us to discuss it at a briefing, um, councillors.
Question?
Uh, yeah, councillor Roberts?
Will this affect any operational matters if we defer it?
I'll put that to the, um, Mr Kiriaku, that's answer, I suppose, yeah?
Um, that, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, um, certainly we, we could accommodate, um, a deferral of a month to meet our, um, requirements in terms of the, your community strategic planning, um, community strategic statement for the, which will come in place next year.
So is it worth actually putting in there to come back to a briefing before the matter comes to the August council meeting?
Yes, I think so, I think so.
Yes.
Councillor Mattson, yes. Councillor Roberts, I think just said yes.
So councillor Nielsen, do, is that what you intend, have a briefing before the?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, it's.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, so councillors, I'll put it, we're putting the first motion then to defer. Um, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those again?
Right.
I declare that carried.
Thanks, councillors.
So the next one is CS thirty three slash twenty one, councillor Andrews?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'll second. I'll second councillor.
Seconded by councillor Roberts.
Mr Mayor, I move the, um, recommendation on the business paper. Um, I'm glad to see that stage one of the Anzac Parade Walking and Riding Path project from Fisher, whatever, to Stret Kingsford.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, just to be clear, when you actually called this out, Mr, councillor Andrews was not moving it. But that's fine, I'm happy to allow that to occur, but this was, and it's just, it's just jumping.
Sorry councillor Parker, but in the scheme of things.
Oh, yeah, it, 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 it's, it's, it's fine, it's, it's fine at the moment. I was going to say the same thing, Mr Mayor, in regards to the COVID package, I thought I was councillor quarter.
That's why I, I only go by the ones I hear, so keep going, councillor.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
And councillor Roberts, a second up?
Yes.
Do, do you want to speak on it, a second up?
I, I, I just think it's wonderful, so bring it on.
Uh, Mr Mayor?
You could, yeah, oh, sorry. I saw councillor D'Souza's hand up. I'll go councillor D'Souza and then to councillor Mattson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, we all want a world based on caring for each other and the planet. Moving swiftly to a post-carbon future, holding indigenous rights and pursuing economic justice for everyone. Our actions here, the Walking Riding Paths Project, will decrease our carbon footprint and help us to move swiftly to a post-carbon future. It has my full support. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mattson?
Yes, um, I think it's a, a, a very praiseworthy report. And I would remind councillors that, um, in the run-up to the previous council elections, Bike East, um, submitted questions to candidates, uh, asking for an endorsement that they, or a promise that they would all go about bringing about safer bike facilities in the city of Randwick. And I think we have genuinely tried to deliver on that as a, um, board of councillors. So this is good to see.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Any further discussion? The councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? To declare that carried. So then we move on to CS 34 slash 21, forming strategy councillor Roberts.
I'll second councillor Hamilton.
Councillor Hamilton?
I am. I'm happy just to move it. I called it in error.
Okay. Councillor Hamilton, do you want to speak?
I reserve my right.
Uh, Mr.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
Look, I think we should congratulate the staff in the integrated transport section of the council. I think they delivered on so many contentious matters. And I think we've been well served by them.
Thank you for that. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried. Then CO 29 slash 21, councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I'd just like to move this one.
They're going to councillor Andrews.
Councillor Andrews, seconded.
Oh, it sounds like councillor Parker to me.
Councillor Luxford, go ahead.
Yeah. So I just commend this this recommendation. The Westpac helicopter is a vital service within our community. And of course, it extends to other communities as well. And it's an integral part of of who we are and down here in Randwick City. And it's an integral part of the surf lifesaving community. So it works hand in hand with our great volunteers on our wonderful beaches. So, you know, this is, it's great to see that we're continuing the partnership.
Councillor Andrews.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to second the motion and I concur with councillor Luxford.
So councillor, oh, councillor De Souza, is that hand up or just that's from before? Yep? No? Thank you. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried. CO 30 slash 21, councillor Hamilton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question in relation to this one. So given that councillor not going into caretaker mode with the postponement of the election, is this still required? Is the extraordinary meeting still required?
Uh, do you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the extraordinary meeting is still required, given that we were moving towards an extraordinary meeting. And we did have a little bit more work to do in relation to finalizing the tenders for both the construction contract and the operating contract for Heffron Centre. We did put those on the agenda for the extraordinary meeting. And so from a timeline perspective, we really do need to move forward with that extraordinary meeting.
Okay, thank you. Based on that, I'll pass this recommendation according to the business paper.
And councillor Andrews seconded. So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried. CO 30 slash 21. And I'm sorry, we just did that. Sorry. So CO 32 slash 21, councillor Parker, seconded by councillor Andrews.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the recommendation on the business paper with the inclusion of one sentence after point D. I apologize to Mr. Kelly for not sending it to him. And at the end of the sentence on point D, it would include the words including rebates on annualized fees. Full stop. And then a point E, which has the words to review the COVID-19 package if the lockdown extends past September 2021. So sorry, rather than past, into September of 2021.
I'm happy to accept that as a second to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I commend the broad thrust of the report. I am among, and as I'm sure many councillors have, have been contacted by concerned businesses, residents, as well as community groups who are impacted by the lockdown and the COVID-19 pandemic. There's a large degree of uncertainty out in the community. I know just as we have been meeting this evening, there's been an announcement that the lockdown will extend for another month. So I think it is more than appropriate that council has responded with a package. I anticipate that we may in fact be back here in subsequent weeks or not months reviewing this package for further measures. However, I think this is appropriate at this time. I commend the report to the council.
Thank you. So councillor Andrews?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I congratulate and commend council staff who have recommended this motion, this matter to us because in times like this, we need to be here for our community and we need to be here for our local businesses who are suffering at the present moment in time. I'm very happy with council's response and the overall package for our community. And I really am happy to see and I congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, in the food hampers that have been delivered to our vulnerable members of our community, which I think started last week. It's very important that we look after the vulnerable members of our community and giving them food hampers is a great gesture in times like this. But I also commend the the council's response and recommendation with the waiving of outdoor dining and footpath fees, the waiving of environmental health and inspection fees, and also the rental rebate on council tenants who are suffering at the moment as a result of the lockdown. So I commend the council officers' recommendation.
And can I just, before I move on to the councillors, I'd just like to acknowledge as councillor Andrews just said, I was talking to manager Jodie Tweed today of community development and her team. And three of the team weren't there because they're actually delivering packages themselves from Addy Road. They picked it up and took it out there. And Ms. Tweed actually organized that through connections at Addy Road. So it came in very handy. And it's very appreciated. So I just want to commend our community services team that they really are the unsung heroes. We all see what happens every day on the road. We're doing drainage and rebuilding roads, but no one actually sees what goes on behind the scenes with our community development team. So congratulations and kudos to them. Councillor De Souza and then councillor Mattson.
Mr. Mayor, I too would like to commend you on the hampers. FDR or Franklin Delano Roosevelt said in his inauguration speech, you have nothing to fear but fear itself. His inspirational words galvanized and motivated a nation to overcome the social and economic crisis, which we knew or now call the depression. This COVID-19, Mr. Mayor, does cripple our families by the manacles of fear and the chains of insecurity and leadership such as yours and actions such as yours. Help to remind the community that it is a sense of community we're talking about. And no matter how difficult times get, this councillor is there for them. It's a bit like that Holly song, you ain't heavy. Or it ain't heavy, you're my brother. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well done. And I fully support this notice of motion. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mattson?
Yes, I'd like to suggest move an amendment that an extra point F be added, reading the council will present itself as a pro-vaccination council and use its council resources to positively promote the uptake in vaccinations in our area.
A second.
Now, I'm responding to what we saw in the media over the weekend.
You'll accept that?
Yeah. So just sorry, councillor Mattson. So councillor Parker and Andrews, you accept it?
Yes.
Just to elaborate a little bit, I think now is the time for all good councils to come to the struggle and make a stand against the misinformation that's being circulated out there in the community against vaccination, against the very mechanism that is our best chance as a community of getting through this Delta variant. So what I was hoping is that the amendment is, if put it, gives enough flexibility to the mayor and the general manager to take appropriate steps to put our image out there and promote ourselves as one of the pro-vaccination councils.
So the mover and the secondor accepted it. So Mr. Kelly, is it a line that's, it's point F, Mr. Kelly? And sorry, councillor Mattson, can you just repeat that again?
Certainly. That Randwick City Council present itself as a pro-vaccination council and use its council resources to promote a positive message on the need for our residents to take up vaccination when offered. It could be worded a lot better.
Did we get the gist? We can, it's okay if we feel a little bit twisted for grammar's sakes.
So essentially, Mr. Mayor, you would have the freedom to use your mayoral column. Josh would be able to insert it perhaps as the media release, as appropriate.
I could have used my my actual sofa. I was meant to get a shot on Friday and it got extended out for two weeks.
Well, you're still an opportunity. Get down to your local chemist and twist an arm and get a shot in your arm.
So sorry, was there more hands up? Sorry.
Yes, I had a question, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Nielsen?
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. On page 179 of the business paper, down the very bottom of the pitch there, we say that the, in terms, this is under council response to COVID. And it said that we have 100% rental rebate for council tenants that have been required to close due to current lockdown for the duration of lockdown period. And then in brackets, put in range. What does that mean? I think it's probably used.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we were looking to put in a range there in regards to the potential cost in in waiving those fees. But we did include an estimate of 147,451 for the purposes of rental rebates.
And then there's the same sort of point, the next point in terms of, and is there such a thing as 50% rent or re-date? Is that a correct term? Or is it rebate?
I'd take a very good guess and say it's meant to be a B instead of a D. It's just a typo, but.
Okay, so then we've got a typo there. And then we've got again in parentheses for the duration of down period. So bless you, her sneezing. Yeah. So I mean, I'm totally in favour of our package, don't get me wrong. But I'm just concerned seeing as the general manager is a financial wizard, as we know, just wondering whether we have at this stage any, I any, I suppose it's an unfair question, general manager. I take it back. I guess my main point was actually the put in range and when we will be putting in the range. When will we be deciding to insert that figure?
So as councillors would be aware, the different, there's a different situation for each of our tenants. So until council does consider passing, well, when when this motion is passed, if it is passed, and we will get in touch with tenants, we will let them know the the assistance available to them, after which they will be able to tell us as to whether they have had to close down or not, as to whether they have been impacted or not. So it is a very difficult one, unlike other waivers that have been included, including footpaths. We can look at past budgets, but certainly for rental rebates, that could change with with the different businesses and not-for-profits that that rent our premises. So there will be a range. And we'll be able to report back to council in relation to what subsidies have been provided based upon. What's included in the report, which is the the relevant part, is that the recommendation be that the 100% rental rebate or the 50% rental rebate be provided for for the period of the lockdown. And that would be something that the council should be focused on. Thank you very much.
Any further questions, councillors? So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried.
I had my little hand up, Mr. Mayor.
You sure? It wasn't there? Do you want to say something? I'll go back. That's fine.
No, no, I just want, no, I just wanted to add my little bit again, like, you know, how proud must we all be as councillors to, you know, to see these reports come in? We've said several times in meetings that we're all about roads, rates and rubbish. Well, we're a lot more than that. I mean, where this council has come, and especially through a pandemic situation that we're in now, one in 100 years, the way that we've sort of raised above and one looked after, what was it? I think 230 casual jobs. Now, you know, we're helping our businesses and our communities, you know, through packages and everything. Like, I just, I am just so proud of the work that this council is putting in in such difficult circumstances, where people's anxiety levels are up so high. Therese, you know, I commend you as their leader and everyone that you're in charge of. I mean, I couldn't be prouder as a first time councillor. And if my term ends this election coming up, something I'll remember was what this council did for the communities and the businesses and also the visitors to the area.
Thank you, councillor De Rocha. So what, councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried. CO 33 slash 21, councillor Andrews? Local government?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I note, I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I'm just want to know whether local government conference is going to hit this year, noting it sort of is a week before council elections, which are now in December.
I'll ask the GM if she's got any intel on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we haven't had confirmation on on that.
Okay, I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Do I have a second to?
Yeah.
Councillor Hamilton? Councillor Hamilton seconded. So councillors, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against? I declare that carried. There's no petition. So councillors, it's bang on half past eight. We'll have a 15 minute break. So please come back by court tonight and then we'll get through the rest of the paper.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Mattson?
I'm definitely here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Shure?
Councillor Nielsen?
If we're doing the Ralcol Parker.
Present. Carlos.
Yeah. Yep.
Councillor Andrews is back. We're getting through this pretty quickly.
Don't speak too soon, councillor.
I was about to say, I'm touching wood.
Never say that.
De Souza.
Okay, I think the only one is councillor Bowen. Is that right?
Did you say councillor Roberts?
Yeah, he's here. Councillor Bowen, I think is the only one I haven't heard.
I think the only one is councillor.
I think the only one is councillor Bowen.
Is someone recording this or on delay? Just heard my, my self-feedback.
No, someone must be watching the YouTube stream because it is a little bit behind.
So it's only councillor Bowen.
I think we've got quorum.
Okay, we'll go. So first one is NM 50 slash 21, councillor De Rocha, first planning a 2021 local government election.
Yes, I still think that even though the election has now, um, has now been moved to December, I still want my motion to go ahead because I can't see this pandemic and what's happening at the moment ending up in a hurry. And I know that we do have to have an election at some stage, but as everyone probably sees, people out there at the moment, um, people's minds are all over the shop, people's homes are all, you know, disturbed because all of a sudden, you know, your home is, is no longer just your home, it's your workplace. And there's so many elements that I see that are affecting people all over the place. And, you know, for, for the normal everyday person, that's not computer savvy or, or savvy on technology in its own, people who love voting for the people that, you know, that represent their areas, I don't think they'll be in a right state of mind, you know, to do this electronically and, and, and head outside, you know, the norm. I think we still need, you know, sort of baby steps to get people to, you know, to, to come into this. And I just think this, you know, even though we might in December, you know, go to that election, I know people are spending money, it's costing money already because we were planning to, to do this in September. But, you know, the, the fight with this COVID, i- it's upon us and it's getting worse, um, you know, by the minute, you know, just the cases, I think it was 170 extra cases or something that, that they mentioned. I just think that, you know, I'd like my points of this motion to still go forth and I'd really like, you know, and that's basically like not just to think of myself because, you know, with us councillors, the people, the people that know us, you know, um, they want to talk to us, they want us to reach out, they want, and I know we can't do that at the moment. And I don't think that, you know, we should be doing it at the moment. So I just hope that you support my motion the way it is.
Um, do I have a second?
I'm, I'm happy to second it, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor De Souza, and do you want to speak on that, Councillor De Souza?
No, I reserve my right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? So I'll put it.
Yeah.
Oh, councillor Roberts.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I respect where this motion has come from. But on the flip side of the coin, it's important that people have their voice heard. And I'm of the view that an election can be held in a COVID-safe way this year. And so I can't support the motion.
Okay, so, no, councillor Shury.
Um, I can't support the motion either because I think that the government are working on ways that are different for voting this time round. I think they've already announced an extension. I think that it will make the next term of councillors really difficult. It'll be too, far, far too short. You know, if we delay it any further, then we will find that, you know, the next tranche of councillors will only be in maybe for, for two years instead of three. So I'm sorry, I think they've done, I think they're working responsibly this time round. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Is that, yeah.
Sorry, I'll go to, back to you councillor Mattson, I'll go to councillor Hamilton first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that this motion, it, it's a mute point, as far as I'm concerned. We've got the extension, we will have a term of two years and nine months and we will be I-voting. This is the, potentially the future of local government elections, that we will continue to, to I-vote. Everyone on this meeting knows how expensive it is to run a campaign. And so, and, and also it, it is a huge waste of paper because we know the whole lot just goes into the bin. And so if there's a way that we can reduce, you know, the environmental impact, we can use technology and we can use it wisely. And I take councillor Shury's point that they are moving ahead with this insensible way and they really are. And so I don't think that we should look at this as a detriment to anybody's campaign or a detriment to the democratic process. It is just potentially the future of our local government democratic process. So I won't support the motion, but I do respectfully understand where this came from before the weekend's announcement on postponement of the election to December.
Councillor Mattson?
I'm happy to support the spirit of the motion. And yes, as councillor Shury says, there will be a shorter time for the next administration. But it's quite open to the minister to add an extra year onto that administration. This is not the first time I've had a deferred election at all. I've had, this is my, I think my third one that I'm on at the moment. So look, there's nothing sacred about the particular dates that an election has to be had. The minister does have the power to vary it. And I think we should err on the side of utter caution. The pandemic, as we've said many times tonight, is not under control. We don't know where we will be by this time, well, say by December. So I'm willing to support the motion.
Thanks councillor Mattson, I'm not thinking of myself either.
So councillors, I'll, I'll put it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those against?
No.
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 I'm favoring on the side of lost, but okay, I declare it lost, I was waiting for you.
Can't we just, can't we division, can't we?
Second, I go for the division.
Yeah, go for division.
I did declare it lost, but
Oh, but I called-
I'll do it, but, okay.
Before.
Okay, councillors, I'll go around the book, I'll go around the table, councillor-
Against.
Councillor Shury.
Against.
Councillor Neilson.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Parker.
For.
Councillor Andrews.
For.
Councillor Bowen.
Against.
Councillor Mattson.
For.
Councillor Roberts.
Against.
Councillor De Rocha.
For.
Councillor De Souza.
For.
And the mayor is four, so that's one, two, three, four.
Lasting vote again, Mr. Mayor.
Six. No, actually, that is-
Lasting vote, Mr. Mayor, yours.
So I declared that carried, so I'll write it.
Good on you, Mr. Mayor.
Well done. The people, thank you.
Then NM 52 slash 21.
They want their voices heard.
Councillor Mattson, need to state that, oh no, we've done that, sorry, we've done that one.
Doing the gym.
NM 53 slash 21, notice of motion of councillor De Rocha proposing an outdoor gym at Bowen Park.
I'll second that.
Isn't this in budget already?
Yeah, I'll second it, he just wants to get his name.
There is, I've been informed by Todd that there is, you know, money there for, for a project. But we have to bear in mind that initially there was a gym that was going to go in Bowen Park as part of the community's project, building for our communities, whatever, you know, back then, and then that was sort of put to the side for a while. Oh, and then nothing happened. And there's been a lot of people around the community that have been saying, what happened to our gym, you know, at Bowen Park? And, um, you know, I, I sort of spoke to Todd earlier because I, I realized that, you know, um, council, they still got that in mind. But, um, I, I'd still like for the people to say that this, this gym is still on a plan to do and not something that we're just going to get put to the side.
And councillor Hamilton? Second?
I reserve my right, I'm fully in support of, well, I just didn't reserve my right when I started talking, didn't I? Fully in support of outdoor gym. I think they're a fantastic idea. And I know we've had discussion tonight around sport of all kinds moving indoors. But the reality is we have a beautiful climate and we have fantastic viewpoints from these locations that mean it is always utilized. So if you look at Neptune, Neptune Park Outdoor Gym that was recently introduced, it's always full, there's always a group of people using that equipment. So I can see this being another success.
Thank you, councillor Luxford, you got your hand up?
Yeah, mine was just a question that, that I thought, like, I know Carlos just, councillor De Rocha just gave a spiel there. But this was already voted on and it's in there to, to happen, is that correct?
Mr. Clark, you there?
Uh, that's correct, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the, the project was successful in, um, in allocation of funding in the current financial years, Capital Works Programme. And I just know the, what I believe is the intent of, of councillor De Rocha's uh, motion is that, um, you know, given lessons learned from previous gymnastics, or sorry, gymnastics, previous, um, outdoor gym facilities, um, that, uh, you know, the, the different ranges of uses, considering we have different types of outdoor gyms, um, situated locations from Laperoo's to Claybelly now, um, all servicing different groups. And then the, the intent for Bowen to be appropriately designed, considering stakeholder needs.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, so, okay, councillors, I'll put it, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against, carried. And note, motion NM 54 slash 21, notes of motion from councillor Mattson, parking issues in those streets.
Seconded, Lindsay.
Seconded by councillor Shury. Councillor Mattson, do you want to speak on the matter? Councillor Mattson?
Sorry, I've been approached by residents primarily to argue that this collection of streets down near the Randwick Environmental Park are being targeted by backpacker vans and long-stay campers as other areas of the city have been, like, for example, up near Coogee, Marubra, Endeavour Park. Some areas of the city are prone to being de facto camping grounds for the backpacker movement around Australia. They're advertised on social media, their word goes around that if you're in Randwick, you can park down near the Randwick Environment Park. Up until recently, we had some signs there, no stopping 10pm to 5am in Junga Street, which did work. They had a secondary purpose in preventing backpackers or dissuading them. As I understand it, the recent traffic, there was, has been a recent traffic committee recommendation for their removal. I would like that resolution to be reconsidered. And if not possible or not supported by other government agencies for the reinstatement of the no-stopping signs, that perhaps we look at the option of adopting the no-camping or staying overnight signages that, as I mentioned, prevail in other areas of the city. Clause B would be that a, a second report be brought back to councils on the additional signage in these particular streets. So I've worded them as they are because to my mind, they are the ones likely to benefit from signage that puts into place two existing New South Government restrictions. This being a restriction on vehicles longer than 7.5 metres or heavier than 0.5, 4.5 tonnes parking for more than one hour, as stipulated in New South Wales Road Rule 202 and to the 2016 requirement that both trails are to be relocated by at least one street block every 28 days. It is extremely difficult to actually move commercial trucks, camper vans, boat trailers on. But these two restrictions are available for the council if we took up the option of using them in that area. As I suggested in clause eight, if councillors are not of a remark, not of a mind to overturn the traffic committee recommendation, that instead of no-stopping 10pm to 5am signage, that we consider putting in the no-camping or staying overnight signages that prevail in other areas.
Um, councillor Shury is seconding.
I saw a trouble with my mic. Um, I reserve my right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor De Rocha, do you have a hand up or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Murray, in regards to the signs and when no camping and staying overnight, you can apply that to car parks and parks. But really, that's not appropriate for the roads because technically, a- and signage can be a good thing to sort of, you know, deter people to, to hopefully get them to just go. But there's really no law that actually stops you from sleeping in your car.
Yeah, I know.
Just sort of, yeah.
Yeah, council officers are aware of that, they-
Yeah, it's a very hard one, but it's a very hard one because even when you're out there trying to deal with it and, and when people do know the law, then what happens is they come back and smash us council because people start questioning, you know, um, do we know what we're doing or what? Just applying scare tactics. I think down the track, what we need to do is look where we can put something for backpackers and the like to maybe stay overnight and have a nusha charging $10 a car and provide showers and toilet facilities.
Yeah, I thought the Malibu Headlands myself, but-
That's exactly.
Councillor Roberts, you, you speak?
Yeah, I, I have I have significant concerns about part A. Not familiar with the reasons why they elected to remove those signs, but I imagine the reasons were because of community feedback to council that prevents local residents from using those areas to park their own cars. So I'm very reluctant to overrule the traffic committee on that. But I'm happy with part B, so maybe the mover could accept an amendment to delete A and just have B, where we look to put in signs reminding people about the trailers and camping.
Yeah, I take your point and, yeah, okay, let's drop point A. And, and, and let's depend on the, the report being brought back on a range of options that we could try as some way of bringing some relief.
I think we should go back to the traffic committee with our concerns. Councillor Shury.
Um, yeah, the reason the signs were there, unfortunately, councillor Shury were for a different reason other than the reason that the residents want them back. So the traffic committee, I think, would be possibly reluctant to overrule itself. But I'm, I would be happy to go back to it.
No, it does reconsider, Murray. I've, I've, I'm on the traffic committee and I've brought items back to the traffic. Sorry to interject, but yeah, they do reconsider.
Councillor Roberts, bearing in mind what councillor Shury just said, would you be able to live with part A being put back in?
So you're just asking for a report on whether they should be put back in?
A report in both clause orders A, but I think a report back to the councillors before we go back to the traffic committee would probably be wise, bearing in mind what both yourself, councillor Shury and councillor De Rocha have raised. It's all useful stuff to mull over. Definitely, I, I would like to see some sort of measure of relief for our mutually eastward constituents down there.
Yeah, I could probably support it on the basis that it's just a report at this stage, so nothing's resolved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so councillors, I'll put it.
I don't really agree with that.
So they leave it in and councillors, I'll put it, all those in favor- Absolutely, leave it in, and councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I declare that carried. So we have NM fifty-five slash twenty-one, notice the motion from councillor Mattson. We suppressing and maintaining endangered flora in Randwick Environment Park. Have a second, eh?
Uh, yes, um, indeed.
Yeah.
Lindsay.
Shuri, yeah?
I. I'm actually moving it in an amended fashion, uh, with the wordage that you now see in front of you. Um, the reason I put that change into place is because uh, residents have brought to my attention that they also have a concern, not just for the endangered eastern suburbs, banksia scrub communities, but for the specific species Acacia terminalis, otherwise known as the sunshine wattle. Um, look, both of this, both this community and this particular species fall under the um, protection of the um, Department of Agriculture, Water and the Environment, the Commonwealth Department of Agriculture, Water and the Environment under the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act. Both of these um, specimens have a requirement that a recovery plan must be put into place, uh, not just at the Commonwealth level, but at the state and um, obviously at the council level as well, because we will be the ones providing the data information. We, we actually have a legal obligation to look at these uh, measures, we do. Um, if you follow through the legislation, we are obliged to protect the specimens of flora if there is a ruling that a recovery plan must be put into place. Um, to be honest, um, when I first got on council nineteen ninety-five, council offices did have a map of the extent of the endangered eastern banksia scrub, but by now, that must be really out of date. Um, I think we could, we should, we have to return to updating it. Both of these species are out there yet. Um, I think some of the endangerment, uh, some of the um, the wattle will survive on the northern shores or the beaches area, but there are still remnants here as well. It's been put to me quite forcibly by members of the community that this is a legal obligation. Now I'd ask for support for it.
Okay, councillor Shuri, a seconder?
Um, I reserve my right, I think Mr, councillor Mattson has said, said all that I would say, thank you.
Um, councillor Nielsen has a question?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, Mayor, it's really um, perhaps to the um, mover and seconder. Um, I'm totally in support of what you're but I'm just wondering whether we need somewhere to include um, report, that a report be brought back to us in relation to this matter? Or these matters? Would you be supportive of that, councillor Mattson?
Yes, I am supportive of that, and a report would allow us to better define our legal obligations and what is specifically required of us, so yes, I think that would be very wise. So I, I support a report coming back, dealing with the intent of both of the clauses.
Good, thanks very much, I support that, yeah, thanks councillor.
Councillor Bowen?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor, I just got some, um, just a question, firstly, in relation to this legal obligation, um, if the relevant council officer could um, give us some advice on that, I mean, is this, is there a legal obligation?
I think it's Mr Clark, but Mr Zammatt's probably not the expert.
He might have to take it on notice, that's fine.
Just interpreting the question um, uh, and, and the, and the motion.
Uh, I'm quite happy for it to be taken on notice.
Yeah.
Take it to, to Mr.
Broadly, we, we do have an obligation to protect um, the, the, the species as, as noted, but I can, I can provide further priority on what, actually what that um, what that responsibility lies within council as well.
Just, and a follow-up question. Both of the species that are identified, and this is just my sort of mug understanding of uh, um, trees, um, a banksia and a um, uh, a wattle, as I understand it, are trees that have a fairly short lifespan, like thirty-odd years or something like that. Councillor Mattson's yeah, I've obviously said something that's upsetting, because I kind of I, I, I think I know the answer just from his facial expression. You know what, I'll move on. So I'll assume those trees have very long lives, and uh, what, and look, I don't really have a problem with the motion, uh, but um, I, I, one bit I don't, I'm not attracted to is this enlisting consultants. I mean, we've got our, we've got a, a really well-qualified, um, uh, you know, environmental manager, who's got a fantastic record at this council. And I just don't understand why it is that we would need to get consultants. Um, this is, this park is like the, you know, really is a crown jewel of, of a different kind uh, in our community. Really valued asset at the moment, I might add, um. So I would ask the councils, council, um, the mover and the seconder to um, amend B so that it, uh, we're requiring our council staff, because I, I don't think anyone's got the expertise that we have on this council in regards to um, uh, you know, knowledge of our local environment, and particularly the park and all the resources are, are, are there, that's where our environment manager is based, so um, that, that's my only concern, so I'd just ask the, the mover and the seconder to, um, uh, if they could take that on board, I'd, I'd, I'd be delighted to support this motion.
Uh, in replying specifically to the questions, Mr Mayor, um, the first point is that uh, it is only the wattle that is a, a tree, because it's a single species. The eastern banksia scrub is not one single species, such as a tree, it is a community of species, um, of a, certain, that if present identifies the area as supporting endangered eastern banksia scrub. Uh, so that's, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
No, it comes in an.
Okay, the second point on why we need an external consultant, no, certainly I'm not trying to denigrate the um, expertise of our staff, but if we do have a legal obligation to prepare a recovery plan that meets all the requirements of the, the Commonwealth Acts, then we really need to show that um, we have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, and that we have uh, identified consultants with an expertise. Our recovery plans as such, if you want to think of them as this, they are basically legal documents we're entering into, and we need to be able to defend them.
Well, I, I've just got a follow-up question then, Mr Mayor.
Yep, sure.
Um, to the appropriate council officer. Um, do we have the expertise to, to um, do the update mapping of both the spread of weed invasion and the remaining extent of indigenous native flora and fauna in the Randwick Environment Park? So does the council have the expertise to um, deal with that issue?
Mr Clark?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor, we definitely have the internal expertise um, to, to identify, however, we would consider um, based off works at hand, whether we would supplement those expertise with consultants, but um, nonetheless, the decision would be, would be left to staff um, to determine if they would like to um, engage the, the services of the consultant, rather than just go directly to consultant.
Well, in, in that, in light of that answer, I'd move an amendment to B that um, that council undertake to update the mapping and so forth, so keep the rest to the end. And if required, retain uh, external, and retain consultants. Is that, uh, so basically, it's the same motion, we just say that the council will do it, but if they feel the need to use consultants, they can.
As a backup. Councillor Mattson, do you accept that?
Um, I'm happy to accept it, I have full confidence in the director's expertise and ability to re- rationalise his resources as appropriate.
And councillor Shuri, is okay with you?
Turn my mic on, yes, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you. And then councillor Roberts, you've got your hand up.
Yes, uh, my question is, uh, the fact that there's no financial consequence to council in this motion, does it rule it out of order? Question?
Well, in the motion.
I have no sh- Specifically, the, the use of consultants. Like.
Mr Mayor, I would.
The, okay, the amended motion now does not mention consultants, uh, well, it does, but only if required, does that still, that's still a potential big impost on council that we don't know? Um, looks like the general man.
Yes, the general manager have to ask and answer that, I suppose.
Uh, through, through you, uh, the financial impact depends on, on whether we're doing it within existing budgets um, or whether we need an additional budget. Uh, if the motion is passed, I would suggest that staff will uh, review our resourcing and determine whether that can be achieved within existing budgets. Question?
My next question is, uh, uh, aren't these matters a matter for um, council, but also state government, environment department, uh? And does not council already manage this issue? So does that make this motion redundant?
So either the GM or Mr Clark, whichever one wants to answer it.
Sorry, can I just get um, the question repeated, um, through you, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Roberts, can you say it again?
Does the, are the issues brought up in this motion addressed through normal council operation and normal operation of the Environment Department of New South Wales Government? Therefore, does, does that, my question is, is this motion redundant because it already happens?
Uh, so through you, Mr Mayor, um, council does have a responsibility um, in the matter at hand. Um, the, the state would, would, would do as well, however, I, I believe the motion is just looking to, to update our existing plans and that, that we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, well, I'm happy to support based on uh, the fact that it's not going to be um, too much an impost on council uh, in terms of its existing uh, resourcing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So based on that, councillor Mattson, do you mind if I put it?
Uh, by all means, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so councillors, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against? If you say that carried. Um, now we go to NM fifty-seven slash twenty-one, notice the motion from councillor Roberts.
I'll second that, councillor Hamilton.
Seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Roberts, do you want to speak on the motion?
Thank you. Let me just uh, find my page. Yeah, councillors, I'm just, I'm just asking uh, for your support tonight, just for council to bring back a report, uh, nothing more, uh, on a topic that the staff are already looking into, uh, in terms of reducing speed limits in our local streets, so they're already looking at uh, reducing it to forty in certain zones in the area, um. I'd like them to also bring back a report, it's, it's in uh, paragraph D, um, bring back a report on how to further ameliorate uh, the, the situation of dangerous uh, car travel in our area. And specifically how it relates to safety and concerns of parents regarding the safety of their children, and how it prevents children pretty much from leaving their homes without uh, close supervision. Um, and uh, and so I'll, I'm asking council to uh, to look at potential ways we could reduce, or we could basically make our streets safer, and in that report, I'm not asking the report to be entirely about this, but in that report, I'd like them to investigate one, one aspect among many others that they could also look at, but one particular aspect would be uh, part E, where very quiet streets that just have local traffic only, I would have significantly reduced speed limits and see what the, what effect that would have. And the um, scenario where that would potentially be, be looked at would be if that's by the consent of the uh, residents of that particular street. So it's just a, it's just a further uh, extension of, of the journey we've already started on. Um, and uh, and, and yeah, part F is just a, an in-principle support of the concept that if you're in a quiet, small uh, street, uh, that's not a thoroughfare, the current minimum, the current maximum speed limit of fifty kilometres an hour is, is not appropriate. So thank you, councillors.
Okay, councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, I would just like to say that I fully support this thing, it makes me think of when I was growing up and when you were just able to run straight out across the road, over to your friend's house, and everyone then, um, you know, convened on the the verges and, and the uh, roads and just started playing sport, and I think that in, if we can in any way do that for our children now and into the future, then we should be doing it, and I agree that councillor Roberts' is, is recognised, council staff already worked toward this, and I just think that this motion is, is really significant in highlighting one aspect in, in recognition that the council staff work on this under a huge umbrella and, and under uh, the, the pressures of a lot of other priorities, so bringing this to the fore is really important, and it's, and it's a great thing for for us to try to encourage the, the culture of, of uh, neighbours and children getting together and getting to know each other. So I'm very supportive of this motion.
Right, and councillor Roberts, can I just get you to take your hand down? Um, so if there's no further discussion, I'll put it. All those in favour say aye.
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 Against? I declare that carried.
Thank you, councillor.
Now we're on to confidential. Um, I'd just ask if you can make sure there's no one in the room, et cetera.